If not, it's for something that you might do in the future.
Yes.
I'll call this meeting of the Onslow County Board of Education to order and thank you all for coming out. Wasn't it a warmer day today than yesterday?
Yeah.
It certainly was. I remember those days when I was in elementary school waiting at the bus stop and it was about that cold and it didn't seem as cold then as it does now. Good announcement today I want to share with you. Barnes &amp; Nobles will be opening on the 29th and for those of you who love to go over there and you can take your grandchildren, it's a good opportunity to hone up on your literary skills after January 29th. I'm sure it'll be packed that day. We're here today for several purposes and one of them, of course, is for us to receive some reports from our staff but to plan for our budget as we move forward and to get some things on the table that we need to talk about. We also want to use some of this information to prepare for our meeting for the, with the commissioners on Monday and hopefully they'll have their agenda out pretty soon so we'll kind of have a better knowledge of what they anticipate. And I believe Jeff and Dr. Singletary are quite aware of some of the things that will be spoken about in that meeting. Feel free to ask a lot of questions because this is a workshop. It's not for us just to hear from our staff. It's for us to question and to get the answers that we need and if they do not provide us something that any of you want, all you need to do is speak up so we can get it and hopefully we can get it in a timely manner. So today I'll just go ahead and open with the Skill Center update and I assume Steve, you or Dr. Singletary are going to take the lead on that.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Good morning, everyone. I'll be very brief and succinct on this one. The Skill Center is not going to open this year. We have determined that the schedule right now is delayed for a variety of reasons. Obviously hurricane and there are other things connected to that. We've had several completion dates anticipated through this project that were not realized and right now the latest information that we have is that it could be partially, maybe partially, ready sometime mid-March. Well, our semester, we will be a month past when our semester starts at that time. So we are making an administrative decision that we cannot provide what you would want and what the students have been expecting to get in a partial facility after semester started for a month. We have notified our partners of this so that they and along with our high schools can make adjustments in student schedules for second semester to get them back scheduled within a full schedule on their campuses. At this point, we are being told to expect full delivery of the project hopefully in April. That will give us time to fully equip it, get all the bugs worked out of getting that complex center equipped and operative so that we can start with a full program in August with everybody getting all of the advertised expectations there. Our partners have been supportive of that and they are understanding. Obviously, the delay is not what we wanted but it is what it is. So as I said, this isn't the first delay and but we think now we're working with contractor and with the architect to be sure that all of the expectations are going to be there so that when we do take ownership of it, it'll be fully available. So we're working towards that and Madam, that's the update on that one.
Questions for Dr. Singletary?
I've got a couple.
I have questions. Bob, you have?
On the documentation that you provided us with the updated, do the As next to dates for the start and stop dates, are those amended dates? Is that why that A is there?
No, sir. That's just the way I identify each line item.
I'm talking about on the date itself.
On the date itself?
There's A, some dates have a regular date, others have an A on them.
I'll find out. I'm not sure. I'll find out.
Okay. I was just wondering if those were push dates regarding that. And what is the total float that we're talking about on the right-hand side?
When you're talking about total float, what do you see at 15? That means you've got a window of 15 days, additional days that you can complete the project but still not impact the schedule. If you see a zero, that means that's a critical path where it has to be done by that time. If it's not done by that time, it'll impact the schedule.
What are the fire or the life safety issues that are holding up the project?
The life safety issues that we're talking about are the MEPs, mechanical, electrical, plumbing. And in that process, what we want to do is mostly is the plumbing that we're talking about where we're, to complete the plumbing. I mean, they want to make sure they complete all the plumbing before they go ahead and release it. And we're in the culinary area, that's where they had some additional work to do that they could complete in time and then also put the cement pile up after that. So these are some of the things we're looking at.
Steve?
Go ahead.
I'm sorry. Go on, Bob.
There were some items in here that it listed that they were honor change orders on there, like doors and et cetera. Is that something that we had not anticipated putting into the design of the project?
Some of the, some of the design of the project, as you know, we were, we were moving on the fly on this project because money was coming in quickly and we had to respond quickly. So some of the changes that were done were change orders made by, made after the initial specs were laid out there. But please note that those change orders that you've seen right here in this project so far
Already done.
Did not have a significant impact on the schedule. Each change order they, that we placed at zero, zero additional time allowed for. Now that may, if we have another change order, for example, epoxy floors in the veins, that would change that.
And on the outfit, the upper floor of this, the second floor, in our original plans, I did a walkthrough with you last week and noticed that we have a significant amount of space up there that is something that we knew we were going to have to contend with at a later date.
Yes, sir.
Have we done any studies with regards to if we're going to push the date on the opening of whether or not we can finish any of that out?
Initially, we've had some initial conversations on it but we haven't had any defined meetings or plans to figure out exactly what program would go in place on that. There's some restrictions on the building itself. I think you had mentioned earlier that we can't, the building restrictions as far as the money was funded couldn't allow administrative, administrative offices there. So some of the conversations we're having vary from what instructional programs could be put in there, could the virtual, virtual classrooms be put in there to help? And then another thing is what about teacher development spaces? These are things that we're talking about but no, no sit-down define what program would be available, but that hasn't been done yet.
Our original program on this one said that we were going to partner with Coastal Community College, Coastal Carolina Community College on this one. And I'm just wondering whether or not we had any discussions of possibly building out some of that upper floor where we could utilize that or for traditional classrooms for people that would normally take them in one of the schools. If they're going to spend half a day there, could we have math, science, or something that would be closely related to the instructional that they're going to get there for the tech side of it? That we could also have classrooms in there and eliminate some of the travel time or the downtime of kids being on the buses or possibly having kids spend half a day upstairs in instructional, the other half down into another area.
That's, that's a possibility. We'd have to take a look. We haven't contacted the community college yet as far as the additional space up there. One of the things that we're looking also is additional funding that would be required for. So if we have 1,600 feet, I mean, you're talking approximately, we did $100 per square foot for renovation, we found about $1.6 million. And so we have to look to find additional funding for that as well.
All right. Thank you.
Jeff?
Two or three things. First of all, I also had an opportunity to, to go through the Skill Center. It represents tremendous opportunity for students in our system and I think it's, it's been a long time coming. I remember years ago when I was employed here, 12 or more years ago now, we were looking at, at Skill Centers and technical schools and, and this is a fulfillment of at least part of that dream that we had back then. I, I did take a look upstairs. I know that it's over 16,000 square feet and I believe that, that it would behoove us to, to look at the possibilities for outfitting that space now for a couple of reasons. Number one, we seem to have more time. I have another statement on that in a moment, but we seem to have more time. We're not opening in, in weeks. It'll be months. And for the taxpayers of Onslow County, it will never be cheaper than it is right now to, to finish outfitting that space. Additional mobilization cost will be incurred if, if later on we're, we're coming back with a different contractor or, you know, of course, based on some of our delays, you know, we, we may have considerations that way as well. But the thing I think about is if, if it's an opening, if we open school, if we have the Skill Center and we have some number of, of students downstairs on that first floor, a couple hundred of them, and they're working away, probably it would be disruptive to their educational endeavors to have crews immediately overhead driving in steel stud walls and things of that nature during the course of the workday. And I don't know that, that the space is, is small enough to be able to complete a construction project during a summertime. The outfit of that space may take longer. Even if we were able to partially outfit, if we were able to, to simply put up walls and sheet rock and we could later on paint, carpet, wire, which would be less disruptive to a classroom environment underneath, that would be something to consider. Also, just the pure security aspect of, of some number of people that are not school system employees, parents or students on a campus, when, when you're not doing what we've done before in our bond referendum where we would build an entire building, fence it off from the rest of campus, there's the construction site over there and here's the rest of campus. We're talking about the same building upstairs and, and the transport of materials and everything else to the second floor. It'd be, it'd be just difficult. So I, I support a reasoned effort to put something useful there. I do like the idea that Mr. Williams suggests of, of doing something that would also cut down on our ongoing operational expenses. So if we could cut down on transportation cost or something else like that by providing more educational opportunities to the students of that one campus, eliminating transport time on buses from their home, high school to the Skill Center, that might be something, something really reasonable to look at. All of that's on the second floor in the outfit. I, I do have a couple of questions. It's my understanding, is this correct, that Pinnacle Architecture did this project? That's the letterhead of, of the document in my package.
Yes, sir.
Do we pay Pinnacle Architecture for construction administration?
Yes, sir, we do.
It's been my experience over 25 years that when you pay an architect for construction administration, it's their responsibility to make sure that things proceed on track and on time and within budget. Is, is my understanding that only a portion of the reason that we're unable to open the Skill Center on time is hurricane-related? Certainly, that's not maybe the least of the reasons. It was a tremendous hurricane that did significant damage and it did damage, I understand, at that site and likely made it more difficult for construction crews that may be tasked with something else immediately post-hurricane to have their own issues with their own homes. I want to be considerate of those facts as well. But, but we pay an architect to keep us on time and in schedule. And, and some, some portion of this is, is not related to the hurricane damage. And so it's, it's disturbing that we're at this point when we have construction administration by Pinnacle that's supposed to keep us on track. Thank you.
Thank you. I want to ask a question, Steve, about the safety and security. I, I looked through this last night and I think I did it in my sleep too. Do we have already, have they installed the sprinkler system and the firearm wiring?
That's part of the life safety systems. The sprinkler system's being installed right now with plumbing on it.
It's not late.
The wiring, and that's one of the reasons why March 1st is the, when we anticipate that having a full sign-off on life safety systems. That's one of the reasons why we're late.
Okay. Now, the other question kind of refers back to what Mr. Hudson said. Is the infrastructure for the classrooms that would be, that, for that area to be utilized, is that going to be put in place now even if we aren't going to use it? Is the infrastructure going to be there?
Ma'am Chair, you're talking about the second floor?
Yes.
Part, part of the infrastructure's there. The sprinkler system's in, will be in place. We will have to do some additional electrical and ventilation as well.
It just seems like it would be reasonable to have put the infrastructure in for the whole, entire building even if we weren't going to use it to begin with. Now, this board, other than our new members, we came forward and we know, we approved the plan that we didn't have enough funding to do all the trades we wanted and we were going to do four, three or four. And that we would go back and do the, utilize the upstairs area, the mezzanine area, whatever you want to call it. But I was still under the impression that it would have had all the infrastructure ready and all we would do is go in and put up the walls and place those out. I don't know how the other members of the board interpreted that, but that's the way I interpreted it.
One of the things too is until we know which program is going to be in there, some of the electrical and some of the HVAC systems that are, that would be utilized in that area wouldn't be installed. But the capability of having an HVAC and electrical support is in there. The one thing that we did make sure that was in there because, I mean, was going to be needed to service across the board would be sprinkler systems. So part of it relies on program two is figuring out exactly how you're going to put the HVAC and the electrical in there.
I don't know that we had a discussion particular to that. I know that the design plans that the board was presented in, in earlier meetings did not indicate any wall structures up there other than the general outside walls. I don't recall that, and without knowing what the design is, it's very difficult to put a, the HVAC system in or the electrical. So other than running terminations at those points, knowing that you're going to come out of a particular area, that could be very difficult to design something into that. But I, I think that we ought to at least be looking at that right now and coming to a third stage with regards to what are we going to do with that at some future time.
Well, I think the, I think you're right. I still think, I mean, I, I know enough about this to say this is fairly accurate. They still should have included the conduit and those kinds of things where they're going to pull their lines. They can be coiled up and put in the ceiling until you know where, which way they're going to go, things like that. And I, I don't know that that was planned for and maybe I was just trying to think ahead. So if I, if I'm wrong, I certainly apologize for that. I do think we need to look at what, what areas, Voquet should already know what area, what skills they want to be taught so we can plan. Our purpose here today though is really to look at what we're going to do to get ready for being able to move in that building. Right now, we haven't even gotten the equipment that we need. It's not here on any campus for us to put in that building. So we need to move forward with getting the right equipment for those trade areas, which would be, you know, the auto mechanics as well as culinary.
I think, Madam Chair, the schedule shows that we've got kitchen and Bay Area, auto Bay Area equipment coming in in January and February.
I know, but I said it's not here right now. So even if we were going to start our classes in January, we wouldn't have the equipment. And they know that even if we opened in January, culinary school's still going to be at Northside. So we're defeating kind of the purpose, but.
Ma'am, some, some of the components that, for the equipment, especially including the auto, in, specifically the auto, is we do have some that are in storage right now waiting, waiting for the access to the buildings to get it in there. Now culinary is still scheduled, but that's a, that's a time, time-based delivery of systems. So it is scheduled to be delivered at certain times and we wouldn't have to store it as well.
Picking back off of Mr. Hudson's comments earlier about the architectural administration of the project, are we in talks with the architect or with the subcontractor with regards to remediation of what, what damages the, the school district may have suffered with regards to the delays?
Yes, sir. We've, we've already communicated a couple of things to note. First, we have, we have hired our own capital projects administrator who does construction administration on our side as well and her name's Margaret Mosca. She does, she's very good. She, she's very sharp and she's helped take a lot of pressure off just because in this process, trying to get everything done, including Hurricane Florence and all these other tasks that we're working on. So she's, she's been a big asset. But part of that process, we gave notification to the architect and also the contractors that December 18th was the scheduled date that we thought that the project should have been completed because it's supposed to be completed within 190 days. We gave them an eight additional days for Hurricane Florence. So that being said, we gave them notification that the date that it was scheduled to be completed was December 18th. There is a clause in our contract of liquidated damages. So if you factored liquidated damages to, let's say, April 5th when they say they're going to complete now, calculate that out. We sat down, we talked with them. We can't apply liquidated damages until, until the project is completed. That's part of the contract. So what we've done is we've worked with them and they're willing to work with us to provide some kind of renumeration to offset the costs with liquidated damages. So we are working on that right now.
Could we look at possibly, as you're doing your negotiations with them, rather than extracting a pound of flesh, possible upfits to the second floor that we could use and trade for that? That we, if they're going to pay us for it and we have to turn around and pay another contractor to build out the second floor, is it not possible that we could simply work a deal or an agreement with them that we could do partial or maybe full of the top and depending on what liquidated damages we're going to work out?
That's, that's something we could look at, but that would be a future, that would be a future change order or project in itself. And so in this instance right here, what we would want to do is try to, I mean, receive some kind of compensation prior, prior to that and we're working on that already. So yes, the answer is yes, we could do that. But then we complicate some of the other, the projects. So what we're looking at right now is they're looking at giving us some, some offsets for some of the work that's already being done. And so we've been working on that pretty extensively.
What are we talking about monetarily?
Right now with liquidated damages, we're talking about $30,000, give or take.
Okay. So we're not talking about much building with $30,000.
No, no.
I have just one question. When was Ms. Mosca hired on to?
She came to work on January 2nd.
I guess what we need to decide is we're talking more about the future of this building and how we're going to move into it and take advantage of the time that we have where it's not occupied. Does this board wish for us to direct staff to move forward with looking into what we can do to close in and complete the, the second floor? We need to also know the trade areas that, and know that Voquet is satisfied with that because that's their expertise there. We need to know the cost and we also need to know the timeline for that.
Yeah. Madam Chair, you just stated perfectly. I, I think the first thing we did know is programming. Programming-wise, what's on the second floor? That drives outfit cost. If we're talking about large classrooms versus small office rooms, it increases the cost. If, if we were talking about two big rooms, it'd be even less. But, but those things will drive your electrical, your IT infrastructure. If we already have HVAC units that are sized for the second floor as well, which I don't, I don't know, but ideally they would be, then that would lower cost. So, you know, it, it might be that we could get, get into that second floor at a, a pretty reasonable rate, but you just don't know until programming's done.
What's the wishes of the board?
I'd make a motion that we explore finishing out the second floor to at least the level that Mr. Hudson indicated of getting the, the walls in.
Is there a second to that motion?
May, may I offer a friendly amendment?
Sure.
Walls or other portions of construction that would be disruptive to a first floor occupancy?
Satisfactory.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? Now, I'm understanding, I want to make sure that we understand, this is asking staff to research this and not to wait to bring it back to us in a timely manner so that we can make a decision and we have to find the money, Jeff. That, that's the, you know, that's the thing. Doesn't mean that we're going to have those, those rooms ready to move in as far as having a trade area there, a career area there, but they would be ready for us to go up there and it'd be safe to have as, as needed.
Let the record show that the chair appointed Jeff Holliday.
Thank you, not.
And not Pittman already.
It was a friendly amendment.
Any, any other comments on that?
Yeah. Jeff will get two or three more shovels when he goes out back to dig for it. We'll go out and help him.
Oh, just, just one more, one more question, uh, question concerning Ms. Mosca. At, at what point does she have input or influence over this particular report and how is she going to implement her oversight in the future to make sure that these folks stay on track?
That's, that's her task right now.
This is hers?
This is, this is the full-time task, working with it with the schedule, working with architects that she's working with right now with that. And she's doing a great job. She's giving everybody their life.
Not only for this project, but for, for all the other, all the other construction projects.
Which we'll get to in the next agenda.
But, but, but Mr. Lamir, having Ms. Mosca on board does not relieve the architects of record for their responsibility
No, that, I'm.
To pursue construction administration on this project. I just want to make that clear.
I'm, I'm fully aware of that, but, you know, oversight being what it is.
Yes.
I just need information.
And I want to allow one more thing to rest. I asked this when I visited. Word, conversation came back that this lady came on job and did a bunch of change orders and that's what threw all this, a lot of this timing off. The day that I visited was the fifth day that that lady had been on the job. I don't know how many change orders she could do in five days, okay? So what I'm saying is not, was not her fault, was not her responsibility. It came from other areas.
I think there was a little bit of miscommunication.
Yes, there was.
The change orders that were being discussed were the ones that were already done in 2018. And as mentioned before, those change orders did not have any additional kind of pressure taken.
Any other comments or questions?
So, Madam Chair, just, just so I understood that correctly, any Board of Education-driven change orders had zero additional time added to the project budget, uh, project time schedule? So there were zero time change orders?
That's correct.
Okay.
I think that's on this chart, Jeff, if I'm not mistaken, for the ones that are there. I may be wrong. I think there's a zero out by their name, that, that category.
And don't we have change orders with other projects?
Oh, yes. We certainly do.
Why patterns?
That's it. You do, do that and you're rubber building up your home. If there are no other comments or discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Steve, we look forward to this. I know it's another item on your plate, but we need to know that because, one, we'd be saving money, I think, in the long haul, long run on that.
If we're right on, if we get all this meeting, we'll start working on it.
Next item on the agenda is the hurricane recovery facilities update. And I think all of us are interested in this. By the way, just to clarify, people going out to the building, to the Skill Center, I think almost every board member's been out there so they are aware of the things that have been brought up.
It's an awesome facility, just standing parked outside.
Oh, it is.
But when you walk through it, it's unbelievable. It's, it's the planning, the research and everything is so well thought out. It's an impressive building. And when that building and program opens up, it's going to be a show thing in this state.
Steve? Yeah, thank you, ma'am. I will, I will try to be sincere, okay? As sincere as Dr. Singletary. For Hurricane Florence update, just, just a quick synopsis of where, how we got here so far. As you know, we had, the hurricane came in, we had category one, two winds in excess of 36 hours, 35 inches of rain. We had power. We had power outage for 10 days, and that's important to note because once you have that power outage, all that rain and water coming in, you got a lot of damage and a lot of growth inside the schools that had to be addressed too. We had to dry it out. The initial assessment, when we looked at it, just a couple of days afterwards, we came to the board and said there were nine schools majorly impacted, moderately impacted, 18 million impacted, but all schools had some form of damage or mold remediation that had to be taken care of. On October 1st, the state and others were asking at that point in time, well, how much is it going to cost? How much is it going to cost? Realizing we'd just got power on and we were bailing water on the schools still, we didn't actually have an accurate number that we could provide, but our best guess at that time said it could be up to $125 million. Okay? Schools reopened in three phases during October and November. And since that time, we still do have some areas of schools that are still down. Biggest ones are Wyandotte High School. We've got science wing with about 10 classrooms down. Cafeteria was down, but we reopened that in the first week in January. Northwood Park Middle, we have six classrooms and a gym down. Swansboro High School, we have three classrooms over at CTE and the auditorium down. Swanford Middle, we had the gyms and auditorium. Dixon Elementary School, we have two classrooms and a cafeteria down. The cafeteria is being worked on right now. We'll have to work that a little bit later on, but hopefully we anticipate within two to three weeks that'll be opened back up. Trexwell Middle, we have one classroom down. And the reason why that classroom's down still is there's some asbestos in there. We have to use some of the bait that adjusts that situation before we open it up. We had 26 mobile classrooms that were damaged. Right now, we have 16 of them, and you can see it on the list. I won't go through each one of them, that are still down. We have repaired 12 of them already. Also, County School Staff is working on that diligently and we're knocking them out several, one or two a week or dusty. I mean, and by the way, before I go any farther, I did forget to mention, I've got a book of knowledge behind me, which is pretty thick, but I've got the writers of the book of knowledge over on the other side. And that's Mr. Ed Dorn from Smith Senate, Dusty Oliver and Daniel Gray. So if there's any questions that I can't answer, hopefully they can have the knowledge and can answer the questions for me. So we have a lot of temporarys being worked on. Roofing, we had 36 campuses had some form of damage to the roof. Some were minor, but a lot of them were significant damage at the roof itself. So right now, we have ongoing work, working on roofs, working on classrooms, cafeterias, things that we've been talking about before. One of the things that's important today is interactivity. You have this spreadsheet. This is a great summary of the work that's... This is a great summary of the work that's actually being done. If you look at it on the left-hand side, you'll see where we have the schools. The columns that are highlighted in the green area are the roofing. That shows you how much damage we have at each school and the estimated cost. Okay, these costs are from the insurance adjuster. And also, we have some additional costs adjusted from that based on the evaluation that Smith Senate's already done on some of the campuses, the Wyandotte High School and Northwood Park Middle School. The areas in the purple are the campus. These are the areas of damage outside the roofs. Anything besides the roofs is where that's at. And that gives you an estimate right there as well. And what you see over on the right-hand side is the significant areas of campus that have been impacted. So this is a little cheat sheet that everybody can see. And if you look at the very bottom, what you'll notice is that for roofing right now, our estimate is about $11.6 million and about $8 million worth of internal damage.
Can I interrupt you for just a second on that?
Yes, sir.
Those are estimated costs based on preliminary Smith Senate analysis. They have not completed.
This is not all Smith Senate. One of the reasons why it's been a struggle to get to this point so far is we've been asking the insurance company, North Carolina DPI Public Insurance, to come in and do adjustments, I mean, to assessments. Majority of these are assessments from NCDPI, okay? And these are the most recent ones. However, when we go through and we see the assessments back, we evaluate them and we do a review of them ourselves. And there's been times where they've actually missed significant areas of the school and we've actually had to have them come back in and do another assessment, which takes more time to come back in and do it. So the majority of these assessments are from NCDPI. However, we did, based on our previous board decisions, have Smith Senate come in and look at several of the sites for us as well. That was the Dixon Elementary School, Northwood Park Middle, Wyandotte High School, Swansboro High School. So those were adjusted based on Smith Senate. The rest of them are NCDPI's adjusted numbers.
Didn't, if my memory serves me right, didn't we also hire a contractor to do our estimates for us and work with DPI?
That's right. Restoration Associates, and that's one of the reasons why it was important. So the insurance company came in, did their assessments. After they did their assessment, we had to come back and review them. And working with Restoration Associates, or Harrison Jones is the primary to that company, he came back and said, wait a minute, guys, and he's done a great job working with us and identifying and communicating to the insurance company that there's things that they're not doing correctly.
He's still working with us then?
He's still on contract with us. And for an example, just a quick example would be Wyandotte High School, or let's say Queens Creek Elementary would be a good one. Initially, when they did the internal structure, they said it was going to be $80,835. Well, after we got done and asked them to come back and look at it again, it's $125,000. So you're talking about a 50% increase in insurance damage right there. And we've been going through each one like that to ensure that the insurance company is providing accurate information to us so we know what the scope of work that we can do and receive funding for. Okay, so right now, we've got several projects that are going out. We've got some roofing projects, Wyandotte High School, Commons Middle, Clyde Irwin. We also have gym floors that are being worked on. We had several gym floors that were impacted. And in your picture right there, what I'd like to mention is that's Wyandotte High School cafeteria. That was the one that was just opened up about three weeks ago. Our staff did that internally. I mean, they came in, worked it hard and get it done. One thing you can't see in the picture very well, though, is that the floor has damage and is scheduled to be replaced. But we wanted to get the kids in the cafeteria until we could get it replaced because there's asbestos underneath the floor. We want to make sure that we can serve the kids first, and we're scheduling the floor for later, for the summertime.
Mr. Myers, the asbestos is fully encapsulated and poses no danger to the students?
That's correct.
Thank you.
We patched the floor and it's fully encapsulated. It doesn't cause any problems to the students. We have mobiles that we talked about and playgrounds. We had five playgrounds that had damage that were being worked on in technology. We have approximately 135 cameras that were damaged and we've also got, the majority of the cameras were blown out and repositioned because they were thrown off on the outside. And that's about the amount of cameras there.
Do any of these projects that we currently have either underbid or that we're considering, you have to come back to the board for approval?
None of these projects are of that nature right now. Once we get into some larger roofing for Hunters Creek Elementary or Queens Creek Elementary, at that point in time, the numbers would reach that point where we would bring it back to the board for consideration.
What's our threshold to come back to the board with?
I believe it's, don't hold me to that, I believe it's $500,000. I may be wrong, maybe $300,000. We'll go back and work.
Now, Steve, do any of those roofs that are going to be replaced, are they, excuse me, are they already on our list to be replaced for some reason?
I'm glad you mentioned that. This year, in our capital outlay, we did have one roof that was Hunters Creek Elementary that was scheduled to be replaced for a portion of it because we never had enough funds to replace the whole roof. We had about $375,000 earmarked for Hunters Creek Elementary to replace a portion of the roof. The storm damaged the roof to the point where it needs a total replacement and the insurance company has identified that as a total replacement as well. So that will be covered through the insurance.
Steve, are any roofs which must be replaced, and I noticed that the extent estimate here is based on number of squares, squares of shingles?
Yes, sir.
I assume that the insurance company would give us, would pay us, for instance, trying to pick a good one maybe, Jax McCommons Elementary, if they're going to pay us $26,978, they would pay us $26,978 whether it's replaced with shingles or whether it's standing seam metal roof. Is there, are there any of these structures that would lend themselves to replacement with standing seam metal as opposed to shingles? Now, I know on a low slope roof, you have a TPM membrane or something else, and that's not conducive to a standing seam metal roof, but if you have a different roof type, maybe it would be.
Absolutely. There's several roofs that we have out there right now that were, I don't, many of you may be familiar with the Loadmaster Roof System?
Yeah.
And we had talked about that before. Hunters Creek Elementary is a good example, Queens Creek Elementary. The insurance company has identified that as a total replacement. So, but the insurance company will pay for lifetime quality, okay? So they'll replace it with shingles. Now, that being said, when we go out to bid for those roofs, we're also going to go out to bid with an alternate for a metal roof instead of shingles. And the reason why I mentioned that is because while the insurance company will pay for lifetime quality, FEMA will pay for mitigation of damages. What that means is they will look at a situation and say, okay, well, how can we prevent this from happening again? It costs a little extra money to make it so it doesn't happen again. They will pay for mitigation. So while the insurance company would pay for the shingle roof, at that point in time, when we see the alternate for the metal roof, we'll go back to FEMA and ask them for mitigation funds. And if we can make that happen with the cash flow as it is, then we probably go forward with the metal roof instead of the shingle roof.
That's good news. But FEMA, one thing to note, FEMA will only pay for cost of mitigation up to 100% of the original damage without doing a specific and onerous cost benefit analysis if it's over a one-to-one ratio.
That's right.
So, but I'm glad if we can take advantage of that to get more robust roofing systems on than shingles. I know we've built roofs to the money that we had in the past, but this is an opportunity to build longer.
And that's one of the things we're looking at. And Smith Senate is very familiar with the Loadmaster Roof System. We brought that to the board earlier, and so they're looking at helping us make sure the design is correct for that as well.
Quick question with regards to the sheet of damages that you have here. You can have asterisks off to the left side of Hunters Creek, Queens Creek and Swansboro, but I don't see a legend that shows what the asterisks represent.
I apologize. That was me in the process of earmarking it. Just let me know that these are Loadmaster roofs. Okay, as far as work being scheduled, these are the things that we're talking about. When we schedule out roofing projects, what we're trying to do is we're trying to group roofs. I mean, not just one school, because we may have one school that has one square to be fixed. We may not have a contractor, a large contractor that's interested in it. So we try to group roofing projects into multiple roofs. So that way, we get larger contractors, get some economy of scale together so we can actually get cheaper prices for roofing projects going forward. Classroom and structural areas, these are areas that we're working on. That's going to be a combination of contractors and also internal staff. But Wyandotte High School and Northwood Park Middle will definitely have to go out there for it. Gyms, we're working on the gyms. We got several bids back on the gyms already for the resurfacing of some of the gyms that are damaged. We're also going out to the contractor, going out to bid right now for the gyms that are majorly impacted. One of the things that I would like to mention about the gyms, gyms are an engineered floor system, so it's a little bit more complex than what people would think initially. So there's a substrate below. Sometimes that substrate has a rubber padding underneath. Sometimes it's just spacers underneath and some kind of a water barrier. But what's happened with this storm is a lot of water got into this substrate underneath, okay? And while the gym floor may look pristine or look usable, there was enough damage underneath because of the water that we knew there was going to be damage. We had a professional floor expert, coming in, Slacker, who does gym floors nationally. They looked at it and they did the assessments and did the, looked at the water content in the floors and everything, and they identified several floors that were damaged that may have looked okay at the beginning. Now, that being said, we just, last week, FEMA came in and helped us and did some insurance. Their adjusters came in and looked at them, and we can actually start seeing the coupling of them now on some of the floors. So we actually, what Slacker, floor expert, said was correct. We're actually seeing damage to the floors that we're going back and asking the insurance company to take a look at.
And that's coming from underneath where the rubber padding is or the original rubber floor?
Yeah, where the rubber meets the road. So, but just, so in case you do hear about gyms and saying, well, this looked good, and I want to make sure people understand, there was some damage underneath and structurally that had to be addressed as well. And we're starting to see that. One of the things that we talked about with the insurance company, and I apologize for going into detail, but they were saying, well, we don't recognize that gym floor being damaged because it doesn't look like it. And they said, well, here's our expert reports. Okay, let's have an agreement in place that within the next year, if the floors do show up any kind of damage, then the insurance company would recognize it at that point in time. So they've come to the rear end on that, and we're already starting to see that.
Steve, and those gyms that were flooded that badly, and how did it affect the bleacher system?
Seven of the bleacher systems were okay. So of them, we still need to be worked on and dusting. Which bleachers?
One's in Southwest High School, which was pretty obvious, was when the rain came in there. They looked pretty pitiful. Now, whether the insurance company will, I'm sure they will help us on that. Now, whether they want to rebuild them or, I think, logical thing is to ask for replacement and see if we can get them updated to ADI requirements, where they're existing and they're not. That's our hope, is to replace those. The other bleachers at the moment look pretty good, for the most part. Like Mr. Myers said, some of the floors that originally looked okay and they're scratching ahead, I had some doubts on some of the comments I read. But now, last week I was there with FEMA and they're starting to bug their cupping. It was like waves across these floors. So he knows his business and he wasn't just blowing smoke. I'm hoping that our insurance agents will look at that and agree that the whole floor needs to be replaced. And maybe even FEMA may end up helping us a little bit on that too with some mitigation. It's our hope. And it's only one process. If things change continually, we want to stay with it and to keep everybody involved as we can to try to get as much funding back.
Steve, have you developed like a Gantt chart or timeline of when these projects are going to be done? I think the board would be interested in knowing an extended amount of time is going to occur. But if you could do that, it would give us some idea, particularly as Mr. Holloman's working on our budget.
Yes, ma'am. One of the things that we've been challenged with over the last couple of months is having funds available to do the projects. And so by putting a Gantt chart in, what we're doing right now, we have limited funds. We're doing projects as we can. We're pulling out of capital, our capital outlay funds this year to help offset the funding and hopefully replenish that again. But what we're working on is... But we're working on is projects as funding is permitted. Once one project's done and you get funding back from the insurance company and/or FEMA, which have, we haven't received anything from FEMA yet, then what we do is we start the next project. So a Gantt chart, while we can, we can identify the projects and how much time it would take to do each project, what we, we have to do is prioritize and we can focus on roofs and then classrooms and gym floors. But, so what we have to do is we've got one project here on a, on a Gantt chart, and then as soon as that one releases, then we can do the next one, next one, next one. But it's, it's, without knowing how much funding's coming in at any given time, it's hard to put a Gantt chart in there.
Yeah, I, I understand that. Are they prioritized by cost or by need?
Prioritized by need. And the highest need that we look at first is our, is our roofing, our, our critical roofing. Now, we have some roofs that may be one or two squares that were, that Dusty and his team's already gone out there and patched them. We've got some that have temporary roofs or tarps that need to be taken care of as quickly as possible. And then once we do that, then we also look at the instructional spaces, get the instructional spaces open as quickly as possible. Cafeterias, that was, that was one of our highest priorities right there. We gotta get, we gotta be able to feed the kids in the cafeterias.
So roofs, classrooms?
Classrooms.
Cafeteria-type spaces?
Right.
And then gyms?
Then gyms.
Well logically, you can only do it when the money's due.
Right.
That's right.
Do we know approximately how much the insurance has paid us to, to date for the project?
I think Jeff's gonna go over that if you don't mind holding that.
I was gonna wait till Steve kind of completed his.
Right, right. Okay. So what, so projects deferred to the summer, these are some of the things we had talked about. If, if kids are using some of the, students are in the classes or in the facilities already, there are some things that we defer in Wydok High School cafeteria floor we talked about. Some of the gyms that need to be resurfaced. They're being used right now, but we want to wait until the students were off, off the floors. The highest, Swansboro highest construction bays, they're being used right now, but the ceilings up there have to be reworked, redone, and, but they're safe and we had county inspector's approval. But at the same time, that's work that has to be done. We want to wait till after classes out before we get them back in there. And then the other thing that a lot of, a lot of our insurance claims include just stripping and cleaning and painting classrooms. Well, we don't want to do that when the students are in the classrooms, and so we want to make sure we start looking on that during the summer.
Can our guys do that?
Some of it, some of it, but resources are premium in summertime, so we may be contracting on some of it too. All right. Some of the key items that we're addressing right now, and we talked a little bit about this, is cash flow to fund projects. And Mr. Holloman's been working with us continuously, trying to make sure we can get enough going and also working with the, the insurance company. One of the things we do have is we have a, we're trying to get a final determination on how much the insurance company is going to pay for the dry out and the mold remediation. So they're working on that. Once we have that, then that's going to release some other funds. That's, that's kind of a, a trigger point for other funds to be released as well. Insurance adjusters recognizing the complete scope of damage, that's where we talk about insurance adjusters coming in and we have to go back and relook, relook it. And then at that time, they come back in again and, and make the correct assessments. Mitigation funds, we talked about with FEMA. What happens if we instead just replace it with lifetime quality? Can we replace it so it won't happen again? And FEMA's willing to work with us on that. And then just manpower, that's the other thing that we need is. Dusty and Daniel, I can't thank them enough and their crew for all the work that they've been doing. They've been working long hours and they've been working hard. I mean, just continuously. There's no slack in this at all. And we've gotten, gotten a long way from where we were in September sixteenth, okay? But manpower is always a, is always a concern for us. And so we have to do a lot of contracting to make things happen. Okay, as far as, and we're gonna start segueing the, the Mr. Holloman pretty soon, so. But as far as funding methods for Hurricane Florence, the primary funding source is DPI Insurance, okay? And as we mentioned, the trigger point, and the reason why that's a primary funding source and it's, it's, it's also an item to be addressed is because once they identify how much they're going to pay, then at that point, the secondary funding source would be FEMA, okay? And FEMA won't pay out until they know how much the insurance company's gonna pay. All right, so, so it's kind of a staggered effect here. And then after that, the state funds may cover any additional things that the insurance company or FEMA may not pay. This is a, the, the last slide in this section, but what I did want to mention to you is updated costs. This is still an estimated range, okay? Because remember we talked about the insurance adjusters coming in and giving us different numbers? Well, what I've done is, what we've done is we've gone in and given, given you our best estimates at this point in time, based on the information we have and what's the worst-case scenario. So based on that, what we're looking at, the total damage for Hurricane Florence now is going to be between forty million and fifty, fifty point five million. So this, and like, like I mentioned before, on October one, when we had provided information earlier, without, I mean, you have to realize, there's no, no covers on the, on the, on the schools. I mean, we had schools open to the rain, just pouring in constantly. We were trying to dry out, we were trying to get the buckets on, we were trying to muck out, I mean, trying to get an assessment, getting staff in, even just to look at things was very difficult. So at that point in time, when somebody said, well, how much is it gonna cost? Well, the best thing to do is make sure we err on the side of caution. And that's when we went set up to one hundred and twenty-five million. Now that we have a better chance of looking at this and stuff, we recognize the fact that it's gonna be between forty and fifty million.
At forty or fifty million's a lot closer to what we had as an estimate.
Originally.
The weekend before, we got the hundred and twenty-five. I think we came up with about thirty million at the first estimate and then we went to a hundred and twenty-five, so.
Right. Anything else for Steve? Any questions?
What, what timeline do we have on finishing our examinations of the facilities and working with DPI?
Working with DPI.
On the insurance to get those finals done?
That is a, it's a slow process. Right now, we're looking at a timeline. We're going through two, we're trying to go through two or three schools a week, but we, I can imagine the sometime in the summer before we get all the assessments taken care of with, with the DPI.
Has DPI staffed up anymore than what they originally had? I think they had like seven people to cover the entire state.
DPI is staffed up. They've got two insurance adjusters for consulting. One is Clyde Nettles for the roofing. Another one is MKA and I can't remember the exact name of the company, but we call them MKA. And they're doing the, everything outside the, outside the roofing. So they're going in and doing this. We have, working with Harrison Jones from Restoration Associates, we have a good working relationship with them. They're starting to respect our assessments of the schools. And so there's times now where they're not even going back in and looking at the insurance adjust, I mean, saying, we gotta look at it again. They're taking our word for it. So that may speed the process up, but without, I can't put words in DPI's mouth or, or tell exactly how these guys are gonna address each one. So we're probably looking towards the end of the summer before we have final assessments though.
It makes it difficult because our budget process has to end much before that. So how do we reconcile what monies that we're going to ask?
Yes, sir.
I can address that, I guess, as we go into this next phase if you want to.
Okay. Well, let's sit there. Any other questions?
Before you begin, Mr. Holloman. Mr. Myers, the, on this last list, the drying out and mold remediation, I assume that, that those are clearly fixed numbers. We, we know that part now because we've pretty much, we finished the drying out and mold remediation.
Yes, sir, that's, that's right. We, we've got preliminary invoices from builder services and then also we had Carolina Clean Care did, Clyde Irwin. So I won't make one caveat to that though. Even though we've got our preliminary invoices from builder services, we haven't received an audited invoice where it checks the duplications and, and make sure that everything's correct. We won't pay out the final payment until we get our audited invoice because we want to make sure everything's been done correctly. So that being said, that, that invoice could potentially be lower. I don't think it'll be larger, but we haven't seen that invoice yet.
So, so on this list, the, the first item, the drying out and mold remediation, that was under emergency and exigent circumstances.
That's right.
Immediately following the storm. These other items, roofing, I assume that's permanent roofing, campus structures, contents, technology, all of those things are, well, and well, I see foodstuffs as well. We pretty much know the foodstuffs.
Right.
I mean, we, we went grocery shopping. So, but the other, the other items would be determined based on actual bids received. So, so these are estimates other than, I was thinking the first one was likely not an estimate. I understand it's, that's the best number we have now without an audited invoice. And foodstuffs, we know that number. Professional services, we should know that number. But, but those, especially the campus structures, roofing, those items and perhaps contents or technology, if it's, if it's a bid situation, we wouldn't have the actual numbers until the bids come in.
The contents and technology are pretty much, we've, we've got quotes and, and identifies, that they're pretty accurate. Technology, we did have, we did have about fifty-seven hundred laptops that were damaged during the storm, that were in one of our storage areas, that were getting ready to be returned to Dell.
How, how many?
Fifty-seven hundred. Yeah. So that's, that's some of the, the technology requests right there. So professional services, this is, this applies to architects, engineers, Harrison, I mean, restoration services from Harrison Jones. And also, we have an attorney if we have to challenge any, any DPI claims that we're looking at. And these are, these are basically as needed.
So, so of the fifty million you've identified here, you have thirty million in roofing and structural damage or, or campus structures that must be reconstructed.
Yes, sir.
So really of the fifty, we, we probably have a pretty good handle on, on twenty of it, but the other thirty is gonna be waiting on some bids received.
Based, based on bids received and also if, if change, scope, scope of claims is gonna change also. For example, when, when we go back out to the schools and we see, well, you, the insurance company said it's gonna be two hundred thousand dollars to repair, and we, we realized when they didn't include the mobile, they didn't include these classrooms or stuff like that, then at that point in time, it may jump up to six hundred or eight hundred thousand dollars. So, but for the most part, we think it's gonna be pretty accurate.
Okay.
Can you provide the board with a, a detailed list of what all of these items and where they came from with regards to what our losses, anticipated losses or hard, hard losses are with regards to how these breakdowns come down? You just mentioned fifty-seven hundred laptops. That just blows me away that we would have had that many laptops destroyed. I, I had no clue that that was the case. That's gotta be a huge part of that seven hundred and fifteen thousand in the technology.
Those, those laptops were in one of our storage facilities. They were the end of the first batch of laptops that was leased. They were sitting in storage waiting to be shipped when the hurricane hit us. So they were all damaged in one location.
Other questions?
Quick comment, sure. We've talked about the nuts and bolts. As I sit here and listen, I hear limited funding, delayed projects, no money from FEMA, prioritized by need, lack of manpower. However, although that sounded so depressing, I think it's a good point. Good side is our students are back in school, teaching and learning is taking place. We have a great maintenance staff and who were already working in high gear before the storm came under these conditions, I think. But thank you for all you do, thank you for your leadership, Steve, and we'll get back to normal Sunday, won't be anytime soon. Because when I hear about the folks impacted by Hurricane Matthew, two and a half years ago, they're still dealing with it. They're still waiting for.
I, I will, I will say that working with FEMA, while we haven't received any money yet, and a lot of it's dependent on what claims are gonna be processed through DPI Insurance, they've been extremely willing to work with us, okay? And they've been, they've been a support team in this process. And so they've helped us identify things and work us through the process. It's, it's cumbersome. FEMA, FEMA paperwork, as you all have heard probably in the past, is cumbersome, but they've actually had a team out here working with us because they knew that we were impacted so dramatically.
Steve, I think that's the word. It is cumbersome. If any of you have ever dealt with insurance companies, I'm sure all of us have stories. Just on a very, very small scale, can you imagine thirty-eight sites, just sites, and then within those thirty-eight sites, all the different buildings and all the different pieces and parts? I, I'm amazed that you've come this far, honestly, and I understand the, the oversight that has to take place and all the different players in this whole business of getting things back. I, I know it's gonna take months and years before we, we, we bring this to any kind of conclusion at all. So, you know, hats off to you guys and it is encouraging to know that you have an agency like FEMA who's willing to, 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 to work with us. So I, I know it's just a, a long, long process when you're talking to, about insurance companies and all the other things.
And many people think of that in reference to their own home.
Yeah.
One building, one site. Our campuses aren't built that way. Just think of Jacksonville High School. You have about a library, a gym, four or five different classroom buildings. So you have eight or ten buildings on one site, thirty-eight sites. It's not a happening.
A lot of roofs.
It's not something that you fix in one week and then you're ready to go again. It's a process. And I commend you guys for your leadership and what you've done.
Well, I think we all can look around the county and see how the effects of insurance companies have dealt us a...
With TARPs.
With TARPs, that's right. That's a, probably a, a stock you want to buy, buy some, buy into. Mr. Holloman?
Thank you, Madam Chair. You have in your packet a one-page summary of the major financial sources that we have so far for hurricane recovery. And just wanted to briefly go through that with you. And Steve mentioned our main source for addressing recovery efforts is through DPI Insurance. And later, that will feed over into FEMA. And then the state grant picks up items that are not picked up by the one. But at this point in time, in order to begin this process, be able to have cash flow to take care of things, we have been able to receive two awards through the state grant. Y'all probably recall, our first award was just over ten point five million. They came out with a second one of four million dollars. And there's supposed to be a third round, which we have not gotten indication of what the timing or amounts on that would be. But so far through the state grant, we've gotten over fourteen point five million that allowed us to continue that drying out effort during the aftermath of the storm. In addition, NC DPI Insurance has begun paying out advances on these claims. They initially gave us one point five million and it was not real clear exactly what portions of our claim that would cover at that time. They were more or less knowing that we had a, a lot of damage and they were trying to assist with cash flow in meeting our mitigation, our dry out efforts. And, and so we received that initially, it was several weeks after the storm, but their, their first offering there. They've come back since then with a second advance, just over seven point three million dollars. And so that brings us to over eight point eight million dollars from DPI Insurance so far. So we've, we've had these monies available to take care of our initial expenses and encumbrances for the dry out services and beginning some of the, the... and beginning some of the permanent roofing replacement. Those revenues come to twenty-three point four million dollars at this point. Now, last week, Steve and I met with NC DPI insurance, and first of all, got a little clarification about that first event. So on the one point five million, they have now stated that they're going to cover some claims in the neighborhood of about twelve million dollars. And so they've specified that one point five million. We now know that is not a duplication amount in that second award. They're not going to be asking for that part back. It's free to utilize for these purposes. So that is now available. And there is about another eight hundred thousand, a little less than eight hundred thousand, that we had capacity to use. And they've already awarded about four hundred thousand in some roofing. So between those, we've got a little less than two million available right now to continue with these projects that Steve was bidding out. We were also notified in that meeting last week with DPI insurance that the third event should be coming soon. I'm expecting within the next couple of weeks of additional three million dollars. So that'll bring us up to close to five million dollars that we have to work with at this point in time in moving forward with projects. As Steve described earlier, this is kind of a rolling process. As DPI announces what claims they're going to cover and provides us with a proof of loss statement that we can send to them on that, then additional monies become available, and he can undertake additional projects. So a lot of this is him getting the bids out there, getting prices that are certain, and getting DPI to validate that so that we can go ahead and move forward with projects. So it's kind of a rolling process. We did receive some comforting information about that initial dry out process, that DPI does plan to cover some portion of that. It was a question that kind of went in all directions. Immediately after the storm, indications from insurance were to, yes, go ahead, get the dry out process going. Of course, we're going to cover that. You need to just get in there and, you know, do what you need to do. And we proceeded with that. And then within about a week or two, we're getting a different message about, oh, that's not covered, that's not in your policy. And we're, whoa, whoa, this is completely opposite of, you know, what we heard a week ago. And then it was kind of in this, well, we'll wait and see what's going to be covered or not. I feel like we finally got assurances last week that they do intend to cover some portion of that dry out process. They're still unclear as to how they're going to determine how much. I think they are looking at, you know, what portion of the roof line that was damaged, and maybe applying that percentage to, you know, the cost of the dry out or whatever. So this is not a solid commitment at this point as to exactly what, how much is being covered. But it is comforting though, they are accepting responsibility for at least portions of this. And then we have to work through that on the details. And that's where it's good having the consultants that we have working with us to help push that process forward and making it be a favorable outcome for Onze County schools. So we're working through that. As those amounts are allocated, then, again, that will free up amounts that we can move forward on additional projects as we're going through. And as Steve said, it's necessary for insurance to either state where their claim's going to be, or what they're denying, before we can ask FEMA to pick up any remaining amounts there. And then we'll be moving forward with that if there's portions that fall into that category. Our fallback position is for these things to be picked up through the state grant, because they won't pick up what either insurance or FEMA picks up. So we're kind of using this as some advance money to keep things rolling until all the dust settles and we know which entity is paying for which part. So that's why when Steve was trying to answer the question about timeframes, it's kind of a rolling process, and we have to wait till these determinations are being made by insurance, so we can get to the next step in that journey.
Do you have any questions for Jeff on this? Because we'll take a break before he gets into his other part of the presentation.
I do have a question. I don't see anything on this chart that shows anything of our fund balances that were utilized for this process.
Right. So if you look at the revenues that we have here from the state grant and DPI insurance, that comes with twenty-three point four million. On the next line, you see the expenditures and encumbrances so far are at about twenty-eight point four million. So there's about five million dollars that is beyond what was available from those. So that's how we're plugging the hole, is through fund balance for any differences there. And that's where I mentioned, you know, at this point in time, now that we have gotten these awards in and the DPI insurance in, that frees up about one point nine million that he can proceed with on projects at this point, because we have the fund balance allocated this. Had we not had the fund balance, we wouldn't have been able to complete the dry out.
What was our original drawdown on the fund balance before we got the state awards? And I'm assuming we replenished some of that.
Well, we've applied all of that towards this. And, you know, it's basically one of these things, in the end, whatever is not covered through these others will be ultimately what comes from fund balance. But...
Okay, let me be more succinct. Do we have fund balance that we've replenished from either the state or that? And what is that fund balance currently?
Well, when we paid out these contractors, at that point, we needed to use fund balance. So we actually wrote a check and utilized the entire fund balance that we appropriated for this, which was about six point eight, six point nine million dollars. Since that time, we have, we've received some of these other awards and insurance in. And so whether you want to consider that there's money sitting in the insurance refund to spin out, or you move it back into fund balance, and then pull it back out of fund balance again, you know, it's kind of a, they all work together in conjunction. But we went ahead and paid out the full amount that we had from fund balance available in order to make those payments. And again, since then, we've received some other reimbursements.
So I guess the question is, are we at a negative fund balance, or are we at a positive fund balance?
Well, what we did is, we had an unassigned fund balance of not quite six point nine million dollars when we started this. And that was just to stay in the account and is available for future years' use, as we have, you know, every year. This year, kind of special, and this was the year that you say, well, now we're going to have to utilize that. And we're going to have to do that in order to get these dry out efforts moving now. And so that's when we went ahead and decided to assign that fund balance towards this use.
So right now, we're looking...
And then we wrote out a check for that entire amount, plus some from insurance and the state grants.
So it's a cash flow issue?
It, there's two things. It is a cash flow issue in trying to get these things rolling. But in the final analysis, if we do not get reimbursed from insurance, FEMA, or the state grant, if there were amounts that exceed what we can get reimbursed from all that, then it would be a permanent issue in that it would permanently heat up those funds because, or some portion of those funds, to cover that difference. Our goal is to try to, you know, through insurance, FEMA, and the state grant, recover all the costs that, you know, came about through this process, so that we're not left on the hook having to pay anything additional.
Right.
And I guess it's, but also, we're not really thinking at this point in time that we need to pursue additional revenues from the county to cover this, because we need to see how insurance, FEMA, and the state grant are going to cover things. Because that was kind of a source of last resort to go to them if we couldn't, you know, get these other options. So we've kind of moved past that emergency stage. We're back in school, and now we can, on a more measured approach, address some of these projects. Now, if that were to change, and we see that it's going to be indefinite holdup because we've come to some impasse with insurance, or the timeframe with FEMA is just too long, we may have to readdress that. And, you know, if it's some kind of timing issues. But hopefully, as this process is rolling along, we'll be able to just continue as we're receiving these advance checks or reimbursements, that we can, you know, be applying that to our next projects and continue this process.
So to make it clear, for my mind, based on this negative number, and all the monies that are expected to come in, we are currently debt financed?
We're financed through assigning that what was previously unassigned fund balance. We've had, we've had to commit that to covering that difference. So we actually had the money, and we're covering this difference with that. But our goal is to get refunded for all of our costs so that we can restore our fund balance to where it was before.
If I could simplify things from my mind, the amount of under expenditures, the four point nine million dollars, that would come from fund balance. And we had a, started out with a six point nine million fund balance that was unassigned that we have now assigned to this. So if we take five million away from that, your two point million, or the one point nine for continued projects, is from our unassigned fund balance. Is that correct?
You can certainly look at...
Okay. That makes it much simpler for my mind to understand it.
We forward funded the work that needed to be done. And we've since reimbursed some portion of that. But it's important to note that we don't have the authority to issue debt. So we're not debt financing. We're savings financing, with hope of reimbursement from insurance and FEMA. And based on my experience, insurance companies that I've worked with, FEMA, and the state of North Carolina that supplied the twenty-five percent match that FEMA requires, they have come through and passed hurricanes. So I feel, I feel confident, more confident in FEMA and the state than the insurance company, which kind of leads me to my question. I know we are where we are after Florence and our insurance company. And they certainly had not, maybe anticipated a storm of this magnitude with their reinsurance pool and things like that. Do we have better confidence that our current insurance carrier would be able to help us in another future event? Or should we also be researching other insurance companies with perhaps different types of reinsurance?
Well, both of those. I do have more confidence in DPI insurance than I did a few weeks ago. They've had more time to kind of settle things out, get their contractors out there, and start working through this. I think there's a lot of lessons learned there. We're certainly going to provide our input on how they may better and more quickly respond to things in the future and suggest that. So I'm having more confidence in them than I had a few weeks ago. But we also have started exploring what other options, you know, may be out there for insurance and all that. Initial indicators are that, yeah, you could probably find something, but because we're Eastern ninety-five, that great rate that you get from DPI, you're probably going to be paying about five times that. And so instead of paying, you know, six hundred thousand a year in insurance, you're paying three million a year. Just rough terms, you know, terms, kind of generally. So there's a lot of things to weigh in there. And I am hopeful that in the final analysis, that DPI insurance comes through solidly, like they should, and it's starting to appear that they will. Were we pleased with their response time? No. Were we pleased with some of their initial assessments? No. But I think they've learned a lot in this process as well.
Well, I think that the school district did good work in hiring, I believe, its restoration associates to work with the district to make sure that we're able to get everything that's legitimately owed back to us through insurance or documentation for FEMA. There's a guy I worked with for years named Alan Barrett. And he was a magnificent finance officer. And every storm, he made all of us repeat in the emergency operations center, document, 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 document. So I'm confident that our staff have documented enough, I believe, to get FEMA reimbursement.
Yeah, I think we're in great shape. And as Steve said, they've been great partners in this process. So feeling much better about where things stand today than we did just even a few weeks ago. So, and if I could just mention one more thing, going back to the fund balance questions that you had. If ever there is a time that has driven home the point of the importance of having a healthy, solid fund balance, you know, we, you know, I preach that all the time. And of course, everybody thinks, oh, yeah, that's the finance officer talk. Well, that time came. And had we not had that, I don't even know if we'd be in school now. I think we might have been, you know, literally dead in the water and having mold growing and building up and having issues that we couldn't fix by now, and would have been exponentially more expensive had we not been able to jump on it immediately and do what we did. And had we not had fund balance in place to be able to do that, we'd be in very bad shape.
One quick thing on this, as long as we're still on it. Are we exploring disaster preparedness plans in the future?
Yes, sir.
Having it in place that we can cover this?
Absolutely. And I know Steve's already started working on some initial things on that. And we're looking at trying to have prepositioned contracts that are just sitting on shelf, waiting to roll when something happens. And you just simply implement what you already have. And that gives you much more time to look at it, how you want to address it going in, and it's just there waiting for use. Now, we probably can't, you know, hit everything that's imaginable out there, but I think we've learned a lot of lessons that we can apply and try to have that in place. And that's a great thing.
Bob, you took the words right out of my mouth. The question was going to be, with all this experience we have now with this kind of thing, and like Jeff was indicating, how about the experience that DPI, and how about the experience of all the other players in this whole game that we've, that's been going on since September? Look at all the experience that all of us have gained. And Bob, your point is exactly what I was about to say. We need to have a disaster plan. And we can call it a hurricane plan, because I don't think it's going to get much worse than what we've experienced. So I'd like to see us have as best we can to have... So I'd like to see us have a, as best we can, to have a plan that addresses. And again, I think we have, I think with your leadership and when Rick and everyone involved, I think, I think we can come up with a plan that makes sense, that has people in the wings ready to roll when this thing happens again. It's going to happen again, hopefully not to this magnitude.
We've always had a hurricane plan. And it's done extremely well in the past. But in this situation here, we learned some things that we're going to include into our hurricane plans, which, which prepositioning agreements and stuff for drying out so many things. Try to preposition insurance adjusters, contact the insurance company and ask them to actually stage people on site. Because one of the things that came up was the insurance, even if they had people to come down here, they couldn't get down here for seven to 10 days. I mean, we were, we were landlocked.
One other thing, on your point there, last Friday, we were invited to participate in the county's hot wash, which was kind of their after action meeting along with various other community partners and go through lessons learned and suggestions for that. And that's going to be an ongoing process. And we were happy to be invited to participate in that and look forward to continuing to partner with the county on that process.
Yeah, you know, we were taking some deans there at the beginning, you know. What the heck are y'all doing? What do we, you know, you've got this company in here drying out the buildings and look how much it's burning through. I don't know how many hundreds of thousands of dollars a day. But as it turned out, you know, looking back, we made some very, very, I wouldn't say we. You guys made some very, very good decisions because mitigating that damage and that rain and that mildew and all that stuff initially was, turned out to be a really good decision.
I assure you that we didn't sit in the meetings. But after having a conversation with Rick Stapp and with some of the members of his team, every time y'all met, they were taking notes. They were making sure that if they had a good idea, they were writing it down. If something they felt didn't work timely, they were making those, as well as trying to have conversations with people who have done this kind of thing before. I think that Florida is an excellent neighbor, even though they're a few states away, who could help us just in the timeline that we were trying to go through recuperating and rebuilding and doing all of that stuff. We had Rotary Clubs from Florida contacting us to bring in materials and supplies for our classrooms. Before they could deliver those, and it was that they were going to deliver it, I think Bob went at the Sunday before Beirut Memorial Remembrance Day. They were hit with the hurricane and got devastated. So, you know, we're in this together with a lot of people around this nation. And they can certainly give us pointers. And I'm sorry to say that we may be one that may be giving them pointers too because that was unfortunate for us. But thanks to staff. Y'all, I know, yes, sir.
I'm sorry. But one, one thing, I wonder if we could be a little bit more specific that, that the board give guidance to staff that know later than our May 2019 board meeting, that contracts that would be for emergency response recovery, that we can pre-screen and pre-award in accordance with our normal bid procedures, be brought to the board if necessary, if the bidding laws require that board action in preparation for this hurricane season.
Well, Jeff, I did sit down with Rick and talk with him about that back in October, that I felt like that was something we needed to do. I said, I don't know if we can legally do a three-year contract and it, and come back and it be renewed so we didn't have to go out every year. And I think staff has tried to address that, at least I hope, I hope they have. But I would not, if, even if we do not have to approve it legally, I think that ethically, we need to know what's going on. So that's the task that I think we need to hold our staff to doing, among all the other things that they have to do. Is any of the board in objection to that? It doesn't need a motion or a second, but I think we need to be in agreement on that. That being said, I think that somebody would like to have a little break. And so let's take just five minutes so that you can do the things that you need to do. Jeff is between us and lunch, and lunch is on y'all. It's not on us. Jeff, thank you for being willing to do this.
Thank you for setting me, I mean introducing me to the topic this way. I was asked to introduce a discussion about future budget planning. And in doing so, looking at where we're standing in light of the county indicating that they will no longer honor the joint education funding policy, we need to have some type of framework for planning for future budgets. And want to address that in some different areas, local current expense fund and also capital related needs. So first, we'll turn our attention to local current expense fund. As you know, the joint education funding policy that we had in place funded our operational needs here through local current expense. And this has been derived through a formula that basically applied our student population times what was the average statewide of what counties provide on a per people basis for students or per people appropriation, EPA. And through that, it was a great improvement over where we had been because it provided a framework for us to plan our budgets. We could do the calculation here and at the county using third party data that was objective, allowed us to know what we need to stay within in terms of our costs. And the county knew how to plan for the amount that they would need to provide. And so it helped them in planning their revenue streams and uses of it. With that, having those two main data points that drive our costs there, number of students, and in this case, we use that per people appropriation, which kind of tracked us with keeping on pace with what was going on across the state, which kind of reflects increased costs that you expect. Even having that in place, we never reached the state average funding because the way that formula was set up, our student population, you lagged a year behind the funding year. The per people appropriation from the state lagged two years behind the funding year. But it was a great improvement because as our population increased, as these costs increased are reflected in that per people appropriation, our revenues in the county would go up, so we would not fall farther and farther behind. With that in place, we still remained, last year, a hundred and forty-seven dollars per student lower than the state average, which equates to about three point nine million dollars below what we would have received had we actually gotten funded at state average. That places us about forty-fifth in the state ranking. But we were pleased to be there in comparison from whence we came. And it gave us a way to track forward and not fall farther and farther behind. Now that the county indicated they're no longer going to honor that formula, have to look at ways to plan for the future and how do we develop our budgets? What's our target? What do we shoot for? Want to point out that this last legislative session, the state legislature changed the way that counties and school districts enter out in the funding process. And if there is a dispute between the two as to the amount of funding. And you have a copy in your packet of House Bill 1031. And in House Bill 1031, it basically lays out a formula as a default funding mechanism if there's not a grievance reached between the county and the school district. In a nutshell, that default funding formula incorporates very similar components to what we had in our funding formula. It also has a student component. So obviously, as you have more students, your costs are going up. And so this tracks along with student population increases. But instead of relying on what per people appropriation average amongst the counties was and what changes occur there, they use a different indexing to track that increased cost side. And what they use there is called Employment Cost Index. That's put out by the Bureau of Labor Statistics. And they identify that as the way to move this forward to keep pace with increased costs. So essentially, you're multiplying your students by a per dollar amount that has been increased over the prior year by that cost index. And so that's how that tracks forward. Again, very, very similar to the process that we had. And that's kind of reassuring to know that they also recognize that your main cost driver is your, you know, student population increase and what's going on with the cost of primarily salaries and benefits is what drives our costs here. In your packet, there's also a handout that's got a graph on here because, you know, the group that want to know if, if we had to rely on the state default formula, how does that compare to what we've been using? What does that look like? Well, again, they both track forward based on student population. So that aspect of it is, is pretty similar. But that index that we're using to increase the per student amount is a different method. So on your graph here, the blue line is the per people appropriation. That's the average across the state from what counties provide, local school districts. And you can see how that line kind of spikes up a little bit and then kind of trails downward and then starts rising back up. A little bit, you know, flat here in the middle. That, and these are not huge swings here, by the way. This is pretty minor. But you could, you could see there's a little more fluctuation in how that increases over time when you go from one year to the next and what that per people average is. The red line is the Employment Cost Index that the state default formula uses. And you can see that line is a straighter line. There's less variation from year to year as, as that goes through to take into account those cost increases. The interesting thing is, is looking at this period from 2007 to 2017 over a 10-year period, while any, any one year, you know, one may be slightly higher or lower than the other, at the end of the 10-year period, they back virtually at the same place. And they're very close in the way those work. So I just wanted to point that out, that how the state default formula tracks along in comparison to what we had been using and so you could see that.
Jeff, are you correct, I mean, if I'm, I'm sorry if I'm interrupting you, your flow. Are you going to address any or just point out some of the ambiguities that are in here? Or do you not want to do that at this time?
Well, the, I think I want to point out primarily that, you know, these frameworks are very similar. There are some, some things in here that, you know, we have to look at and doing calculations on this. For instance, the state default formula is really set up kind of after the fact, after you've gone through your budget process, you've made your request, did not get what you wanted from the county. You go to a joint meeting to discuss that. If that doesn't work out, you go to mediation to try to work it out. If that doesn't work out, at that point, it goes into this default formula. Well, time wise on the, on the fiscal year, you're past June 30th, you're on into, probably on into August and such. Because some of the data points that they're referencing here, like the, the second quarter Employment Cost Index is something that's not actually published until July 31st, which is you're on into that, that fiscal year. And some of those things that may make it where it's not quite as handy to use it precisely the way it's written in here as a planning tool at budget time. Because it's more aggressive that way. So I'm not sure if that answers your question or confused anybody on that. But mainly, I wanted to provide that comparison of what a default formula looks like in comparison to where we were and see if there were any questions about how to fund local current expense or if there's any thoughts or suggestions after listening to that as to how we may want to approach the county in terms of, you know, finding a way forward for us.
I have some specific thoughts on that, if I may. First of all, I would say it's, it's interesting, the chart that we have here provided by the changes of per people appropriation and the Employment Cost Index, that over the course of years, it kind of ends up at the same place. One, one reason I, I thought about, and I did think years ago when we were establishing a funding formula, about an objective Federal Bureau of Labor Statistics benchmark, like the Wage Cost Index or Consumer Price Index or something like that. I, I liked the per people appropriation because that was based on North Carolina data. So LEAs across the state might be experiencing the same sort of environmental pressures. And as, as county appropriations in North Carolina would fluctuate up or downward based on major hurricanes or downward trends in the economy or upward ticks in the economy and more opportunities allowing greater education funding, that we were benchmarking with the 114 or 15 other LEA peers that we have. The Federal Bureau of Labor Statistics, absent a specific region of the country, just looks at things more broadly. So, so the elementary, secondary school workers' Employment Cost Index might be one that is more broad than, than North Carolina. And so that, that statistic may vary differently. Now, I, I do think that there's a real benefit to having objective measures in our different funding formula. The fact that right now, we find ourselves in a situation where, where we don't have a local funding formula and we're about to embark on another fiscal year budget development process is pretty important. And I believe that having been on the staff side a long time, it's really important for staff to kind of know a direction to go in. A lot of times, agencies develop budgets, and this happens at a departmental level, by first focusing on expenditures. What, what do we need to do or what do we need to do our job? The biggest part of which would be personnel costs and salaries and benefits. How many people? And then, then what stuff? Not even talking right now about capital. I'm just talking about current expense. Capital, I think we, we have to consider that separately because we have other pressures on us right now. But, but we're, we also find ourselves in a, in a position where, in the old days, before a local funding formula, which is the most, the best scenario, you know, you had the uncertainty of, of what would a judge do? We have our figure, the county has their figure. We, if it goes to court in the end, we're not sure what's going to happen. So, so there, there could be more room for, or maybe more motivation for compromise on, on both sides and some agreement would be, would be hatched. Now, with, with this House Bill 1031, Section Law 201883, we have a measure of certainty that, that we are to come together. And if we can't come together, then in the very end, there's a prescribed formula. And, and we pretty much know or would eventually know how much money we would be getting. I, it had escaped me, however, that it was the second quarter Employee Cost Index. I had just been thinking Employee Cost Index is really easy in legislation and missed second or some little minute piece. And the fact that that happens in, in July, it's not published until July. And the fact that that happens in, in July, it's not published until July, means to follow the letter of the law, we would be after the start of our next fiscal year requiring a continuing resolution perhaps by both us and the county. That's not in a, that's not a situation that any local government wants to be in. But in the absence of that uncertainty and knowing that we have the state formula using objective measures, I don't know that, that, that the school system should take less than the state says is, is a reasonable amount of funding for the purpose of education. And if I were sitting at the county, I would say, well, I don't know that it would be reasonable to give you more than, than the state says is a reasonable funding amount for education. So for this budget cycle, if we could follow the concept of the state funding formula and work into our budget from a revenue-first standpoint instead of an expenditure-first standpoint, knowing what we would get under, under a variation perhaps of the objective measures laid out by the state, and then if we know how much money that we could reasonably assume that we would get, back up our expenditures for the current expense portion only, I'm talking about, toward that number. I think, I would hope that the county would also find that to be reasonable. But that's, that's my thoughts. I have other thoughts on capital. I, I, I don't think that we can use the same methodology for capital as we do for current expense because we are very project-driven and there are environmental factors that play on us from a capital standpoint, like boiler and chiller disasters, et cetera.
If I may interrupt, just, just to mention, we, we are gonna discuss capital in more detail in just a minute, but go right ahead. But I just, I just wanted to let you know.
I was on a roll.
There's more to come.
So, okay. I'll, I'll forget capital right now, but for, just for capital expense purposes, you know, the, the landscape changed with House Bill 1031. And, and I think that this is, this is the first time that we're going into a budget cycle with 1031 out there on the landscape. We don't have the reliance on a local funding formula, but it's to our best interest and to the county's best interest if we can come to agreement before we ever get to House Bill 1031. Let's, let's craft something upfront on the revenue side that, that I think is objective that everyone can live with. Thank you.
That's, well said, Jeff, well said. And I think that as we're talking about the, the current expense fund right now, you know, not, not capital, I agree with you. I, I've had that conversation with several of you. I think that, that is, well, looking at this diagram, we're gonna end up at the same place, we're gonna have more funding though, earlier, I think.
But it, it'll vary year by year as to how those occur, but basically, this is letting you know, they, they pretty much go hand in hand. You know, one year, you may have benefited a little more from one method over the other, but you're fairly close. And it recognizes, you know, those two main driving factors. You know, as our student population increases, we, we need money to, to fund their needs. And also, as our costs increase, it is, is addressing that as well.
Any comments? Everybody needs to kind of understand this, I think, before we move forward.
I hate the fact that we have to start with state legislature to determine what our local budget is. That's the reality. They put it into law last year that as a final, final stopgap, if we can't agree with the county. I think we have, first of all, I'd be interested if staff has any recommendations of how we're going forward, if we're not going to use the state funding formula or if we're not coming up with one ourselves. And you guys have had some discussions with counties, so I would appreciate if you could share that as we go through the process here of where we're at with the county in regards to them. If we start with the end in mind, and we know that we're going to end up at the same place based on the chart that you've provided to us, logically, I would say, yeah, go with that. I've always had a concern over the long-term funding formula, only from the standpoint that I think it is a, it, it is a simplest method to determine how to come up with an annual budget every year for local expense. My big concern is, as we add 300 students approximately every year to the process, they don't all go into one school. And as they're distributed throughout the district, our costs associated with maintaining our normal course of business, whether that's more teachers or more supplies or whatever, is going to be exponentially increased based on 300 students. I understand that process. But I don't know if it is exponentially up to the level where we need to add every year based on 300 students, another $2, $3 million to our budget. I haven't seen that documentation to show that we would actually need that. It's a windfall for us if we get another $2 to $3 million every year in the budget process. But could we operate the district without that $2 to $3 million every year if we programmed that out to a four to five-year or a three to five-year, whatever it happens to be, the period of time? If we're, if we're getting 1,000 students over a, a three to a four-year period, that we would have our increases somewhere built into that process and doing it that way as opposed to the county having to pony up another $2 to $3 million. And that's their major objection, at least that's the objection that I've heard that they've expressed to me is, does your budget really need to go up $2 to $3 million every year simply because you're getting 300 students that are distributed evenly, or maybe not so evenly, throughout all of the county schools? So, does our administrative costs at the, at the local, does our, does our maintenance increase? We have the same number of facilities. So all of those things that are rolled into that comes from the expense budget. So my concern is that we can look at the end in mind and say, if we can't agree, we know what the budget's going to be. But is that where we should start? I think we need to look at our expenses and realistically come from that standpoint, not look at our revenues and then determine how we're gonna spend it. If we know what our expenses are and we work backwards from our expenditures, we can come up with a realistic budget. But it has to be realistic expenditures that are in line with our growth.
I think that if you're thinking about what are we gonna go into the commissioners' meeting on Monday and say? I think that it's not going, it's gonna be a conversation kind of like we're having now because there are no certainties. I believe they are, and this is my perception, which could be totally wrong. And Dr. Sintieri and Jeff probably can, they, they can say what they'd like to about it because they may have the same feeling. I believe that they're going to, they, that they are entertaining the legislative formula. I think that they also have some ideas of their own between one or two of their cabinet members of what they would like to see instead of that. So, and not knowing what that's gonna be. We haven't even seen the agenda. We're gonna leave there with still no certainties. I, I don't believe there'll be any action, do you, Dr. Sintieri? I think it's just a regular conversation. And if these are points that need to be brought forward, we need to make them then. We need to know why having 300 more students a year costs us more money. Does it, it costs the state more money too on the next year's cycle? So I'm glad you're raising these points and we need to make sure that we have some talking points on those when we move forward, Jeff.
Yeah, I'd be happy to address a couple of things. Coming in from kind of two different perspectives. I'll come back to the cost part in a second, but start off with looking at what type of opportunity we can afford our students in comparison with other students in North Carolina. That was part of that original funding plan approach. And we were very much farther down the, the list before we got into this. And, you know, we would look at, on a per-pupil basis, our funding compared to what the state average was. And we'd run out like a 10-year history. And, you know, over that period, you would see year in and year out, we were trailing, you know, the state to the point of we were being shorted about seven, eight, nine, 10. I think one year's over $11 million below what we would have had had we had just average funding. Obviously, with that comes a cost of opportunities that you can't afford your students. Years ago, we couldn't afford to have one-to-one laptop program or a, a technology staff that supports, you know, the amount of technology we have out there. It's just one example of, of things that we could not do without closer to, to average funding. So there were, there was kind of a missed opportunity approach. Why are our students funded so far below what the other students in the, the state are being funded? And even with that plan, as I mentioned earlier, last year, we ranked 45th in the state on per-pupil appropriation locally. And so it's not like we're, you know, we're the top five or whatever, and, and we're getting way more funding than everybody else. We're still below what the state average was by about $147 per student. So that's one, one approach I'm looking at. And the other part was, I think, you're concerned about cost drivers and, and that type thing. And our major cost drivers are salaries and benefits. And we have no control over where the state sets the salary increases, the certified pay scales, the retirement rates, the hospitalization rates. All those are, we're told here's what it is, go implement it. And so when you have state-paid or federally-paid employees, you know, well, I should say state-paid employees, you know, the state may be providing some additional money to, to cover some of those increases, but there are no increases to cover your federally-paid or locally-paid employees, but yet the expectations give them those same increases. So you have those things that have to be covered. As those increases occur, our certified salary supplement that we use to recruit and retain the very best and brightest teachers to our county, that goes up, because it's a, you know, percentage of their salary. So we have to cover that. That's all, you know, locally paid. It, you know, it's not money that the state provides for there. We have to do that. And, and then there, you know, just other cost increases that, that go up, whether it's, you know, utility bills or whatever that you have to do. And looking at it over the years, usually, pretty much by the time we take this additional revenue that was generated and we apply that to cover ongoing costs, that pretty well eats up, you know, what we do. You know, a lot of years, people are like, well, what, you know, what kind of new initiatives are you doing or whatever? Well, can't really afford new initiatives. We're just trying to maintain our, our current programs at this now higher cost. And so the formula has helped us be able to plan for that and have those monies in place. And absent a, a formula back years ago, back in Dr. Sintieri's early days, the process was we would come up with a budget of what, you know, we felt we needed to do for our students, take that to the county, have to wait and see how much they were gonna give us. Didn't appear to be in particular consistency or...
Recognition of increased costs.
Right. Yeah, to, to, to say, it, it was, it was more of, well, here's how much we have left over after we've covered the needs that we want to cover, so we'll give you that amount and y'all go back and make it fit. And through that process, that, that was the days when we were seven, eight, nine, 10, $11 million per year short of average funding. I'm, I'm happy to report that last year was only about 3.9 million. We've come a long way. So...
I guess one of my concerns here, it's a major concern, is that we're here today to try to get a general idea of what we're going to go and negotiate with the county next Monday. And there is nothing that has been presented or that I've seen in the documentation that's going to be presented on the local expense that details any of what you just said. You have no expenditure histories of what it's costing us to operate from 2007 to 2017. You've given us the amount of money as it's increased that we can show that we're keeping up with the CPI or with the ECI here in this particular case. But we, we don't have anything hard copy, any data to show to the county commissioners or county staff of the reason that we need to go on this. We all know that our costs increase every year. I think it would be helpful if, if we didn't go back 10 years, if we went back at least five years and presented what our expenditures are to justify why we need to escalate this cost, whether it's 300 students or there's a cost benefit of 300 students that's going to cost us $2 to $3 million a year, based on what you just said. But in our presentation today, we don't have any of that.
If, if I may, we're not, it's my understanding that, and I want to clarify my earlier comments, it's my understanding that we're not presenting our budget to them on the 28th. So that's all work to be done. But, but if on the 28th, we're supposed to be talking about a funding formula, my earlier comments were meant to say, when I talked about being revenue-driven, that we should not present a budget whose revenues exceed that which we could come up with in a concept based on the state formula. So if, if the county is not motivated, generally speaking, because of the other pressing issues that they're dealing with, from animal control to vector control, veterans affairs, to fund us more than they would otherwise be required, then we should not present a budget to them based on an expenditure model that was four or five million more than what the state says this is the fallback. Because in the end, we're gonna end up with the state fallback. That is not to say that this board doesn't have the continued responsibility to review all the expenditures down to a school level that, that we are, we are going to be spending public taxpayer dollars on. That's, that's our mandate by law, that we have to do that. So I, I, and correct me if I'm wrong, I did not understand that the 28th, and of course, I was not in any meeting with the county, but I didn't understand that the 28th, we were gonna be doing our actual budget presentation.
We're not.
We're not.
We're not.
And I, and I recognize that we're not going to be doing the budget, but the major objection to the funding formula last year was to cut, was the county has a limited amount of money that they can raise to add to the law and taxes, property taxes essentially. So they have to share that amount of money with all of the agencies within the county. They objected to the funding formula because without raising taxes every year or every other year, they're constrained by how much money they have available. They have a certain amount based on what their revenue base is, property values, and the rate that they have that. That's what sets their revenue rate. And then they have to target that out to everybody else within the district, all the agencies. What I was suggesting, not that we would submit a budget, okay, but that we have a justification or rationale based on expenditures for why it costs this much. If we know how much it costs to run our school district, and it costs us a lot of money, we're about $260 to $300 million a year with all our funding sources now probably. It's a lot of money to run this school district. About a quarter of that comes from the county, right, right around that. If we can show that somehow or another we can lower, and this is a multi-pronged approach because we're gonna go in there asking for more money also for capital, as you're gonna see here a little bit in the other presentation, there may have to be a give and take. Our expenditures may have to go down in the local expense in order to offset an increase that we need in the capital expenses in the minds of the commissioners. That's all I'm saying, is we, we need to have something that we can go in. If we go in and say, we have a document, it's a state law that says you have to give us this amount of money if we can't agree on what you're going to give us. Well, don't give us that eventually because state law says they have to. But that could ultimately affect and hurt what we see and what I see particularly is a more pressing need, is increased money in the capital expenditures areas to clear some of that backlog. And I'll talk more about that a little bit later. But we got a $3 million budget for expenses, for capital expenses in the past with an $11 million or a $12 million need every year. past, with an eleven million dollar or a twelve million dollar need every year. We're never going to catch up, we're never even going to get close. That's all I'm saying, is we just need to have something realistic that we can fall back on.
And you make a good point. We haven't talked about capital yet.
Right.
If I might add, you know, just based on the simple fact that we're looking at these things in real time, you know, if we look at this chart and we say, okay, we ended up the same point, if you compare these two lines, they don't end up the same point at the end of the day. The blue line ends up somewhere lower than the red line does because the numbers actually shifted from year to year. We have to establish a baseline based on what the state's drop-dead requirement is, should we not be able to come to an agreement. We also have to take into consideration, like Bob is saying, all those expenses from a accounting perspective, take into consideration our needs versus our wants. And then at that point, establish a baseline and then work for a happy medium somewhere in between this. If at some point we find that we can get more than is required by the state, it just comes out as a matter of justifying our particular needs. We have to take into consideration fixed costs and those costs that are flexible, those costs that we can mitigate throughout the fiscal year. But we have to determine what those things are, what those baselines are, and establish them before we walk into that commissioners' meeting.
And again, it's my understanding that the meeting next week is, they invited the board to have a joint meeting with them for purposes of discussing funding plans, is the way they put it, and I guess options there, and, you know, what each board may see as avenues to approach that. So that would lead me to believe that they would like to have something in place because it does benefit each board for planning purposes, to know, for them to know how much revenue they're going to need to provide to the board of education, and it helps us to plan a budget within what's going to be available, rather than, hey, we need all this stuff, but you're not going to get it, so then you have to start cutting things. So there are advantages to that. And also need to keep in mind that, you know, I certainly understand their concerns, they need to stay, you know, on budget and within their means. Sometimes the revenues that may come in to the county or the growth that they get in a given year may not be in pace with the growth needs of the school system. So sometimes they need to look at that. Keep in mind that last year, they were forty-eight out of a hundred counties on effective tax rate. So they're kind of in the middle of the pack. They're not, they're certainly not a top bracket tax county, so, you know, it could be one thing if we were, you know, in the top ten and wildly so high, but they're coming in the middle of the pack there. That's just one other consideration for you to keep in mind in viewing the whole aspect of their capacity and being able to do things. And then, you know, it comes back to, ultimately, what level of education do you want to afford the students here in Osceola County?
Going back to Bob's question about the three hundred student increase per year and the cost, I don't know that we've ever really thought about that, mainly because we've never had a funding formula until Mr. Hudson developed one several years ago, and we've had two. The one Jeff developed, and then it was changed, and we entered that. I have a feeling that when we used to go before the commissioners and sit there all day, y'all remember those days, and hoping and praying that they were going to call on us to give our projection, we didn't say how much it costs per pupil to educate a child. We based our request on the state recommendations of what a per pupil expenditure should be. I understand what Bob's saying, and that might not be a bad idea to say, how does our budget have to adjust itself when we get more people in? I mean, what is the cost? I think Jeff said what some of the considerations are. One is that we do have to have more people, more human resources.
Again, I want to follow up on Mr. Williams' comment about the three hundred, four hundred plus and so forth. First of all, this funding formula that we've had has worked well and has been a model for all the school systems across the state. I've heard it said to me, I've heard Mr. Bright say it on several occasions, it is a model. It takes the drama. It takes the drama out of the equation where you're having to go down every year and put on a dog and pony show or something like that. We know what we're going to get, and we budget accordingly. I think he mentioned something about, well, just add three hundred more kids, and they're not all dropping anchor at the same district, they're all lower. It's not like, I want to do something kind of simple, I got forty-five band kids on the bus, why don't you put seven more on there? Won't cost you any more. That's right. It won't cost any more than gas and driver, but I've got to find seven uniforms. I probably have to find seven instruments for those kids. This is a program budget. Your local budget is a program budget. The state and the feds don't give one dime for your athletics, for your music and the arts, or Abbott or anything like that. That is a program budget. So where are you going to start cutting? If eighty-five percent of your budget is personnel, where are you going to start cutting?
Well, that was a point of baselines.
Exactly.
Once you establish the baselines, that you know where you can expand and where you contract, you can shift monies around and do whatever you need to do at that point.
I understand that. Having been in the county for a long time, this is a point of destination. We're growing. There's one chart, I think you've used several times, and Jeff, when you were here, you had the chart, is that growth expectancy. Where are we going to be in twenty eighteen, nineteen? And we're all thinking about that, that's, man, that's a lot of years away. We're here. Guess what? We've got another chart that takes you out, ten more years, and there's a darn good chance we're going to be there. So if you don't, if you don't plan accordingly, you're going to stay behind the eight ball. I read recently in Wake County, they increased, you're Wake County, right?
Yes, sir.
They increased, Wake County schools increased a whopping forty-two kids this year. Now, Singletary, you remember, it was about an average increase of five thousand to seven thousand a year. That forty-two is not going to last long. We are growing, the county is growing, you're adding more water and sewer lines.
As hard as I can.
I know you can, but guess what?
And you don't need any more money to do that, do you?
We're okay. We're pushing fine.
You know what I'm saying.
I do, I do. The cost of doing business does elevate.
I'm looking at that red line as an inflation clock. It's going up. That's not going to change. That uniform that I bought five years ago for three hundred dollars is now going to cost me four hundred dollars.
And that's only about a two percent on average increase there.
To me, it's got a reason common sense in here, but this is a program budget. And we've got a school system that is high quality, and whatever we're doing is benefiting children and our teachers.
Plus Mr. McKeston, plus those new band students that you're talking about, those big horns, who pays for those? The students don't pay for those.
No.
The big ones I had to pay for out of my budget, why do I have to go?
I just mentioned band.
There are, I know you're using that as an example, there are prices out there that you're going to have to pay. And if you've got three or four hundred new students coming every year, it's going to cost you money to do that.
Eventually, yes.
Yeah, I don't want to seem like we're compromising here, but either way, even with what you're talking about, the process remains the same. You take into consideration what your wants and your needs are, and you adjust according, program-driven or not. You take into consideration what your wants and needs are, and you work with it.
And if I can follow up on Mr. Lanier, I think due to the unique nature of our mission, our needs are in part defined by whether the academic programs that we're offering our students are evidence-based and are productive. So part of our due diligence, and the due diligence of the Department of Instruction, Dr. Folger, is, do we have programs, personnel, expenditures that are inside of that budget that aren't producing results? And if so, we need to change. We should not budget because we've always done so. So what I've heard from all my learned colleagues today is that in developing a budget, you know, it needs to be data-driven, evidence-based. We do determine our needs based on whether it's need a new roof, which is a discussion to come in capital, need teachers because there's a certain allotment teacher per number of students, or need program because it's enabling kids to read, write, compete in today's economy.
Exactly.
And meeting them at where they're at. Let us not forget that we have a diverse student body with varied needs. Twenty-six thousand kids and not a single one of them are like another. And so we're developing a budget, okay, through expenditure-based budgeting, but with a cap that it would be irresponsible, knowing that the county is looking at other needs unrelated whatsoever to education, to go to them with a budget, but maybe we even identify expenditures beyond that. But our maximum revenue allotment is probably somewhat based on the concept establishing, established in House Bill ten thirty-one. So we do have a big task ahead of us. I'm very interested in the details of budgeting. I myself have many years used a zero-based budget process so that we start with zero, and that's probably easier here than other places because zero-based budgeting means you start with the things you have to have, and so much of what this organization do is prescribed. You will have this many teachers per students and this many administrators per teachers, or if it does not prescribe, then it's necessary. A good example I like to use, the state of North Carolina, state law says that counties must only provide the sheriff with two deputies, but in a jurisdiction having two hundred-plus thousand people, are you really going to just give them two deputies? There are some other things you have to do. Same for us.
But I'll say this, and I understand what you're saying about the needs and the wants, because I worked many years with the committee here to assess what we really needed. We're fixing up in a new career center. There are going to be needs there. So we're, so, go ahead. So we just need to decide which school we're going to go to and what we're going to kick out on the street and not use it anymore. Okay? I just can't see that adding kids every year, that's going to require more funds. I don't see how it can't do that. I just can't.
No, and part of what I'm talking about is this, as I said, find the happy medium between these, you know, diametrically opposed things, you know, do we do more here because we have a requirement, or do we do less? If we find that we need to do more than, say, the state budget requirement would be if we couldn't come to a decision, then we present it as such. But it'd be realistic, and we establish it from a real baseline where we put our heads together and we absolutely know good and well what we need and what we don't.
I agree. There can be a compromise in there, but I can't see that we don't get any extra IDEA monies. We're fixing to go to a half over four thousand of those students, and our numbers are rising. The federal government doesn't pay all that. They pay about fifteen percent of where they should be paying forty percent.
And our local cost increases every year for that.
Our local monies have to be taken to fund those kids. We can't say to those kids, you don't deserve the right. Well, we're going to find a way.
Those come under the heading of needs.
But the needs are there when we're growing, that's all I'm saying. And I'm ready and willing to reach a compromise somewhere, but we need to be careful.
Just one more point. I can tell you that this system, particularly up here at the central office, has been conducting program audits, curriculum audits, probably on an annual basis. And those programs that are not working, they pull them off the shelf. But these folks like Dr. Folger and Dr. Collins and forth, and I think in every department, they're watching over the tax dollars, it's better than anybody else, trying to get, I call it blood out of a turd, that's an old sentence, but it's constant. They're the ones, the experts, but they're constantly looking at better ways to use the dollars to get the most out of it. You worked up here a number of years, I think you can attest to that, but they're constantly auditing. And I tell you, when this gentleman came on board in ninety-one, that was the first thing he did, being a set of eyes from the outside, but has established that, and we're always in the auditing business ourselves.
Mr. Taylor, we better be in the auditing business. If not, you're going to go, you're going to chase some rabbits in places that are going to surprise you. You know, being most associated with curriculum, I do know the importance of evaluating programs, and those, there have been some programs probably we've tried that have not been as effective as we would have liked them to have been. I can also say that when you're talking about wants and needs, you know, education is not a cut-and-dry, how many bolts and nuts do you produce a day? It's not all about that, you know, those decimal points. It's not, it's not an exact science. It is a people, and people are as unpredictable as they can be, but I think we have to put ourselves out there and be willing to take some risk and try to make the best decisions we can when it comes to programs, when it comes to serving the children's needs. Sure, this discussion about wants and needs is a vital one. We all should do that because we're talking about two hundred and sixty million dollars that drives this whole train. But I think we need to be careful about, you know, our products are not how many cars we produce and that kind of thing. It's not that kind of bottom line. It's how many opportunities we can provide children. And sometimes opportunities, some opportunities are really very cost-effective. Get a good teacher in the classroom, give her or him the tools that they need, and man, you have a great product. And sometimes it's a lot more difficult than that. It's hard to put your finger on what works for Johnny and what works for Mary. So, you know, let's be careful when we start talking about wants and needs about, you know, you take this, it's all about this amount of dollars. Who knows what kids we're going to get next year? What's our turnover rate now, Barry?
Student turnover? It's about twenty-five percent.
Yeah, so, you know, maybe next year's twenty-five percent might be a little bit different in need, so it is hard to really quantify every little piece and part, so...
Let me clarify where I'm coming from, so nobody gets a misunderstanding. I understand all of those aspects of education and the individual needs of the child, so if they can develop appropriately, come out the other end of the process, being a productive citizen, able to think and do, you know, provide for themselves and be an asset to their community and the country. But the baseline reality is this right here. Even we take all those things into consideration, based on law, based on reality, whichever way you want to spin it, our responsibility, and I don't want to mitigate or I don't want to diminish the importance of good programs. But our primary... But our primary goal is to provide a basic education for each and every child in Oslo County. Not the most high-tech, not the most high-speed, not the most progressive, not the most fast-forward, but what is effective by whichever means we can make it happen. All these other things might be philosophical. They might be emotional context of the conversation that, with the larger conversation that we're having here. But the bottom line is dollars and cents. There's a happy balance between all of this. Yes, there is. We can get programs that are progressive and fast-forward and, and with all the bells and whistles, but we can't lose sight on the fact that we have to deal with wants and needs regardless of how we cut.
I don't think the bottom line is dollars and, I think the bottom line is, is, is providing the very, very best education using the dollars and cents in expanding the way that we want to drive it here rather than where our funding limits it to.
Two things I would say. Number one, as Jeff said earlier, I hope the meeting we're going to is just a talking and sharing meeting. I hope that after that, that we can have another meeting.
There'll be several.
Or in terms of a budget. That's one. Number two, Jeff, you have a son in high school, and I also can. Is okay, okay? Or do you want the very best opportunities for your son?
Fine, okay.
Yeah, well, I believe that, first of all, the, the first obligation for my son's success rests with my wife and myself. That, that we, we should have been teaching him and were from the moment he was able to grasp there's something out there in this world. And, and we've done our very best, but, but considering his hopes and aspirations as a dad, I do want the very best. I want beyond a basic education. I want an education that challenges my son where he's at, and quite frankly, he's a smart kid. I'm real proud of him. He takes after his mother. And, and, and he's in the engineering academy. He, he got in with his grades. He got into the engineering academy at Richlands. I'm very glad that Richlands has an engineering academy. I'm glad that Southwest has an automotive program. And, and differentiated instruction because engineering or college is not for everyone. We need, we need to, to let the kids succeed to the extent that, that our resources allow, and also that, that the intelligence of our four thousand staff members can come up with as well. We have such a tremendous resource. I mean, we're, we're the largest public entity outside of the Department of Defense in Oslo County with public assets, resources, and personnel that exceed anything else. And, and that singular focus must be our vision, which is excellence in education. But Bill, I understand what you're saying.
I have to go back to what you just said. What you described just now is basic, basic education. Think about it.
Well.
Hold on.
Define, define basic.
Education appropriate enough to ensure that a child is capable of moving forward where they are in real time based on current technologies and economic advantage. You described it in a nutshell just now. That's a basic education. So it does not exclude all these things that we may have in place. When, when people hear that word "basic," they think it's just a piece of paper and a pencil, and you just roll with it. No. It's a means for surviving in real time based on current technologies in your society. At that point, you can move forward.
Well, you, you know what y'all are saying. It's not an argument, but y'all have to do the point of views.
Which we're agreeing.
We're, you're agreeing, but we're talking more about philosophy now than we are about why we're here.
Right.
That being said, I want you to understand that education in the twenty-first century, a basic education in the twenty-first century is a heck of a lot of difference than it was in the industrial revolution.
Exactly.
And there are many people who still want to teach with rote memorization like we did, no hands-on, just learning facts and regurgitating them. That is not education today, and the education today costs more money. Also, we're, we're educating our kids for jobs that don't even exist.
Or that they haven't developed. So here, here's, here's my point to, to bring that, you know, to a point, is basically wants and needs tries the justification of the expense of which you want to plug into. Regardless of which direction we went, the bottom line is determining wants and needs, and we have to knuckle down and determine what those are.
Well, Mr. Lanier, I'd, I'd caveat that by saying our budget should be based on needs, not wants.
That's what I'm saying. Needs primarily is a baseline.
Needs, just needs. No wants. It's needs, but we define need. As this board, we're tasked by statute with defining need. The need for, to maintain public assets, or the need to take the child where they are at today and, and get them to the very best that that individual child can be, so that, so that they can go into a changing society and be productive. That, that's, that's important. But all this is philosophy, as the chairman said, but philosophy is necessary to give staff direction on which way the budget should go. It's a different mixture.
Well, you sat in on budget sessions, Jeff. So have many of us up here, and you know that our staff doesn't come to us with all of their wants. They may bring several wants, but if you look, if we had that long extended sheet of paper, that it is an, it is a continuation budget, it is not an expanded budget. We don't have that little category of how many extra people they want anymore. We, they, they present it to us as a expand, not an expansion budget, but as a continuation budget, and they do their needs assessments, so, no, yes, Paul?
And I'll say this, because Jeff, I used to serve on that committee as a high school principal representative with you. We would get the wants from the schools, from the principals, from the teachers, and then we, we would sit down and narrow that down to actual needs many, many years. We did that, and we continue to do that.
So at, so at that point, would it not be best to approach this from an expenditure standpoint rather than an income standpoint, because income is that thing that we can't put our thumb on?
If we're basing our budget on needs, we need to project what we need. Unless the board as a whole wants to redirect that, but it is based on need. Let's try to come back, and we, that's a good discussion for us to have sometime, just sit around and talk about our philosophy of education.
It's a work job, I understand. It's something.
Me too.
Needs.
It was needs.
When you, maybe, okay, when you've been near the bottom for so long with local funding, I mean, the, the word "want" never came in. This is what we need. We've attended enough of these. These are just needs, period.
Now, can we come back to the?
Are we on Capitol now?
Let, okay, you want to take?
This may, this may.
When we go to this meeting to, on Monday, I hope that we can sit down, have some honest discussion about where we see our local current expense budget. Those guys over there know what our expenses are. They know our position in, in human resources because a lot of their budgets in human resources too. They just have a different kind of skill levels and departments that they have to adhere to. We are the same, so I think they understand that. I don't know that they are in our seat to see the real work that we do in our classrooms, and that is not because they don't believe in us or believe in education. I just don't think they have any idea how much it's changed since they were in those seats. A lot of us have learned a lot, lot by being visible in the schools and to see what's happening. So I, I'm looking forward to the conversation, and I don't think that any one of us here as a board member or staff have any reservations about speaking our thoughts there. I just want us to speak them with a smile on our face, our eyes wide open, and respectfully, because it's not us against them. We're in this together with the commissioners. It is inherently their obligation to fund the school, local schools. But we need to be responsible to how we spend their money, and I think that's what we need to show to them. Let's go on to Capitol.
All right. Thank you. All right. So just like local current expense, we also for capital need to have some type of a framework for planning, going forward to meet those capital needs. And to start off, first of all, Steve has a presentation about the capital improvement program, and then I'll come back and talk a little bit about our previous funding lots.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Harman. I'll try to be as succinct as Mr. Harman. But this, this was a great segue into this. We were talking about the needs and stuff, and what we're talking about with the capital is the projected needs over the next ten years. Okay, five to ten years. Five years more detailed, six to ten years out is a little bit, a greater area. But at the same time, what, what we do on an annual basis is we create a, we, we update a capital improvement plan. And this is where we actually go out and look at all the facilities and all the needs, and we identify based on, based on specific building systems. What, what and when do we think they're going to need to be replaced? And this is, an example, that would be roofs. Roofs will last between twenty and thirty years. Well, a roof's been on a building for twenty years. We know it's time to start looking at getting it replaced. We've done this several times before with the capital improvement program. I think the majority of you have been through this process before where we talk about how we identify how much capacity each school has so we can identify if we need additional classroom space. We also identify through the assessments, we go back and look at all the different areas of the school too. Are the windows in good shape? Are the roofs in good shape? Are electrical needs or taking care of pavement and whatnot? So what I'm going to do, if you don't mind, is if you got, if you have any questions in the future, I'm going to skip to slide number seven, and that goes through how we do the capital improvement methodology, but I'm going to start talking about a building, building systems lifecycle. Okay? What we do each year, and this, this, in your packet, you have a, a nice colorful little slide right there, and it hopefully explains a lot on what we're doing. This is an example of one of the building systems that we talk about all the time, which is roofing. And the reason why it's important to note this time is because with Hurricane Florence coming in, we had a lot of roofs damaged. We're going to repair a lot of roofs. Well, how does that, how does that change our capital improvement program? That's one of the reasons why we came here today, is to let you know that some, some of the things that are happening because of Hurricane Florence are going to impact our capital improvement plan. So if you look at this, this chart right here, what you'll see is on the left-hand column under each school, you will see the year that that roof is expected to meet its lifecycle. Okay? For example, on Bell Fork Elementary, the multipurpose building, okay, roof's been in place for several years, and it's, it's going to reach end of life right around 2023. That's when we have to start looking at replacing it. Okay? If you look and estimate a cost with today's dollars is what we're looking at for that. And you can see each building, if it's in the green, then we're not worried about the roofs for that building for the next ten years. Okay? If it's in the orange, then it's, it's reaching expected life, and then when it's in red, it's, it's at end of life. One of the things I would like to focus on more than anything else in this, in this chart right here, is you see the hurricane column in orange? These are the roofs that were damaged by the hurricane Florence, and we're anticipating having fixed before, before, to have it fixed. And you'll notice that the most of those roofs that were damaged with Hurricane Florence are on roofs that already let the, exceeded the, the life, lifecycle of the building.
Right.
Okay? We do have some that didn't, but for the most part, you will see that a lot of the roofs that were damaged are the ones that we've been patching because we hadn't had enough money to repair over the, over the past several years. So we've just been patching them and lifting along with this, with our capital outlay. One of the things I do want to make sure I stress is our capital improvement plan is a projection for one to five years and six to ten years out. We have another thing called a capital outlay, okay? And capital outlay is our annual budget that we go present to the county and ask for funds to, to do our repair and maintenance. That capital outlay, part of that capital outlay is built on our capital, from our capital improvement plans. We take our ten-year, or five-year projections, and we take that first year, and we start plugging that into the capital outlay that we present to the county. So there's two different things. Well, people talk about this. By top of our capital improvement program, that's a five- to ten-year projection, on top of capital outlay, that's what we're requesting monies for for the next year. So when you look at this, you can, you can actually see through the chart with the, with the building systems that we have a good majority of the roofs that are being replaced coming out are, are on roofs that have exceeded their lifecycle already and we've been patching.
Steve, this would be a good slide to show, to have for the commissioners because it's showing that they're taking the place of a deferred project.
Yes, ma'am. And that's, that's some of the things I'll, I'll talk about too, coming up as well. The next, the next packet of information you have, remember I was talking about building systems? Okay? Here we have a, a list by school, the schools are up on top, and a column reads school. And on the right-hand side, you'll see the different building systems that we are actually looking at, where we determine what needs to be replaced and what it needs, what needs to be replaced. This is for the five- to ten-year cycle. It's, it's aggregated. So parking drives, parking and driveways for Bell Fork Elementary, about two-hundred-eighty-nine thousand, that's for five to ten years out. Okay? I mean, that's from zero to ten years out. But it gives you a summary for each, each school, which building systems are impacted with our capital improvement program. I won't go into each one in detail, but I want to make sure you guys have this information available if you have any questions.
Mr. Myers, I, I do on this. First of all, if I may, if it would be, okay, I, I'd like to ask for a retitle at the top because when I see CIP nineteen-twenty, my mind immediately turns to fiscal year nineteen-twenty. And so I just, being a bad student, I read ahead, okay? I skimmed, and I went straight to the back page, and I went through this, and, and this looked like in FY twenty, that Bell Fork Elementary School needed three-point-five million dollars, et cetera, et cetera, for a total of ninety-eight-point-two million dollars system-wide in one fiscal year. At which point in time, I passed out just for a second. I, I came back too, and so if this is, I think this is precisely what we need, by the way. I did not know, I have not seen this before today, so good work over the last few years, but I would like to see it by fiscal year. So if we know that the aggregate of Bell Fork Elementary and the others for parking, if you can break that down by fiscal year, that'd be essential for the county.
Actually, we do have that already. It's definitely, but for the sake of being, for the sake.
It'd be five pages, fifty pages deep.
We didn't put that together.
I think you have a longer sheet, expanded sheet. I don't know that you have it today, but that you gave us earlier this year, like, before Florence.
And this.
And, yes, sir.
This assumes all of, of the roofing as well inside of it, I hope.
That's right.
So, so you have major building systems by site, by estimated end-of-life cycle.
Yes, sir.
And so we can project out the ongoing capital maintenance just to maintain the public assets that we have, which are insured at about six-hundred-and-eighty-one million dollars total.
Yes, sir.
Over the next several years.
Yes, sir. And we'll, we'll go ahead and make sure that title's changed once we, and re-release this. And also, when you started talking about Bell Fork Elementary having three million dollars worth of, request three-point-five million, well, that's a want, not a need for the first year. Going ten years out, that would be a need. But for the first year, if we got out three-and-a-half million dollars for one school, that would be considered a want.
Well, yeah, which is why the breakdown by fiscal years is important.
But so like, in, in the next slide, and this, this is the heart of the, heart of the presentation right here, what we've been talking about, is you take that same information that you had by school, by, by system, of building system, this, this right here, and it breaks it out by year, how much, how much each school is going to need for, for capital improvement. There's somewhere that we're talking about, Mr. Hudson, but it doesn't have the individual system, individual systems identified on this one, just have it as a summary for each year by school. The other thing I would like to mention- The other thing I would like to mention is, do you see the column that says hurricane? That was, that was the damages for the roofs from the hurricane that had been extracted from the capital improvement program and put into the hurricane column separately. So these, so these capital improvement program numbers are, are factor in, factor in that the hurricane roofs are already been, been replaced throughout the deployment.
Did it reduce the total?
Yes, yes, ma'am. It reduced the total by about 7.8 million.
Okay.
I've got a quick question with regards to the reference between the two sheets that you just referenced there. The, the last one that has the, this one right here.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Your total amounts on that is 117,449,000. If we look at the breakdown of the other long sheet that you gave us, the total costs on that come out to about 114 million. There's about a $3 million difference there that I'm not able to recognize.
One of, one of the things that wasn't included in this one was for the class size reduction mandates by state. If you look at mobile units, it's right around that $3 million mark.
Okay. Thank you.
So, so if you look at the last, last sheet of this summary sheet for capital improvement plans, what you'll see is that for the year 1920, just, just capital, just for building, building infrastructure, not including transportation or some IT items, we needed $6.9 million to meet the capital improvement plan's needs. So when we go to capital outlay, we'll be factoring in that $6.9 million plus any instructional needs that are, are capital requirements. Transportation, if we need activity buses, we'll be going into that as well. So you'll see above and beyond $6.9 million for the next capital outlay going forward. The following year is going to be $14 million. And it, and you can see cycling through that we have significant needs throughout the years. One of the things, one of the things, want to make sure that for the first five years, our average needs is going to be $8.3 million. And that's after we take the $7.8 million out for roofs.
Mr. Myers, for organization, if, if I were the county, I would, I would care less about the site and how much money per site and, and more about the, the type of endeavor that we're going into. The roofs, you know, boilers, chillers, the major building systems that, that if not, if not repaired, would result in our inability to use that facility or would shorten the lifespan of that public asset.
Yes, sir.
But, but this is, this is really good data and I have not, I've not seen it until, until now. It's very good.
Mr. Hudson, one of the things too, if you go back to that, that she, you were talking about, right, I mean, with the detailed building systems, the last page, right, right-side the column, based on the different building systems that we were referencing, you can see the total, total needs based there. So we can actually say, okay, for roofing or parking and drives, we need $9.7 million.
Over the course of five years.
Over the course of five, I think it's five to 10 years.
The final column is over the course of 10 years.
Over the course of 10 years. Now we can break it down in the course of five years.
Well, with this, with this capital information, I mean, you know, it, it does, it does bring into perspective, you know, the overall picture. And, and current expense and capital have to be considered concurrently as we make, you know, a budget presentation. So I appreciate this information.
Let me interject something real quick here also.
Yes, sir.
Because one of the county commissioners association's targeting areas this year is that they were so successful last year in getting that formula pushed through for local expense, but they're going after capital in the legislature this year. So we can expect to see some type of bill introduced to restrain us from being able to go into.
He sits on that, on a committee.
Okay.
Work, work group doing that.
You know, currently, we, we have to do mediation with the local expense. We should do mediation with capital, but we have the ability to sue if we can't come up with capital. But I expect that to fall in line with what the legislature did last year and change that to prohibit us from doing that as well.
Well, that'll be interesting because how much does, how much does a mediator make? $500 an hour?
That's about right.
Florence, you, you ought to be doing that.
Well, when y'all have a little issue, let me know.
You change that shingle. Change the shingle.
In that, that process of looking at the capital side of things, as mentioned, last year, they made the change. It, it, it used to be you have your budget presentation, don't agree, then you have a joint meeting, don't agree, go to mediation, don't agree there, then you would sue to take, you know, take them to court. With the local current expense, they took away that step of going to court and they replaced it with the default formula. In looking at the issue from the capital side, we've got people from both school districts as well as counties, all there putting heads together, trying to figure out a way to resolve it without that last step. What we've found so far, even all the county folks on there fully agree that there's not really a way to come up with a default formula that makes sense for capital because you have such divergent needs from one county to another. You have some counties that have a growing population and need additional schools. You've got some counties that are shrinking population, they're closing some down. You've got some counties where all the buildings are very old and in dire need of repair. Other counties where theirs might be newer facilities that may not require as much. And it's just such a difference there. And there's also different ways that the counties approach how they do the funding. You know, we've, for our construction needs here, we, we do have that plan in place with the capital reserve fund over the county. You know, other counties may not have had that foresight in trying to put that in place. So it's just, everybody's all over the place and it appears that, that the county and school people there are saying, well, maybe this is more of a planning issue and that we should encourage additional planning between the county and the school system on where you're heading, keeping everybody updated so that everybody can be well aware of what is coming ahead and make, make plans for it. Just have not been able to find a formula, a default formula-type solution. If anybody's got any ideas, we're all ears.
How about common sense? If you have buildings, you have to repair them.
Wow. And prioritization. I know it's been, it's been years, but we had a prioritization matrix when I was here before. And the first one was, is it necessary, is it required by law? Are you going to build handicap ramps? Because that's required by law. Is it necessary to protect lives or health? Handrails on a slippery football stadium? Is it necessary to protect public assets? Reroofing the school so the inside doesn't mold to death? I mean, and I, I don't remember all the rest of them, but, but basically having, having some objective way to go through, go through this list because historically, the last several years, well, I guess the most that the county has given the school system based on, on their need to balance other needs as well has been about $3 million or 3.1 or 3.2 maybe one year. But, but that's been in place is now 2019 and to my knowledge, that's been in place since 2001. So for the last 17 years, if our maximum per year has been three or 3.1 million, is it any wonder that we have to replace 36 roofs after a hurricane?
We're going to, we're going to get that slogan that you just said, put it on the T-shirt.
All right, good. Can I get the royalties from the T-shirt?
Sure. I'll need to donate a guy.
We're in this thing to give, Bob.
So as you can see, we, we showing projected needs over the last, over the next 10 years, about $117 million, $7.8 million of that's going to be funded through the Hurricane Florence funds coming, coming for the roofs. When we talk about school construction, our 10-year construction, and this is based off the old Joint Education Funding Form, and I think it's still in effect till the end of this year. But we, we had a new elementary school in Steve Park that was just completed and opened up in August. And we have two new elementary schools that are going to be opening up in the, we started calling it the Lake and Sound, okay, over by the Catherine Lake area and over by the Stub Sound area. And they're supposed to, projected to be open in 2021. We also had a middle school expansion for Northridge Park Middle, which would address some of the overcrowding at Commons Middle. And that was for 10, 10.5 billion in 2024. A new elementary school, we're looking at to address overcrowding at Carolina Forest, Commons Elementary and Bell Fork Elementary in 2025. And then there's an additional school for 2027 that's to be determined. That's, that, that's long range. And so what we want to do is look at the out-of-capacity charts to see where we actually need it. Would be a middle school, would be a high school or an elementary school at that point in time. So that's something that, as we get closer to that window, we'll have a better feel for it. But once we start looking at out-of-capacity projections close to 10 years out, it gets a little bit more vague and stuff. We want to be a little bit, we want to be detailed when we do this stuff.
How, how would we come up with a figure of $30 million in 2027 and a figure of $31 million in 2025 for a school if we're building them all the same approximate size? I can't imagine the cost going down.
I'd, I'd have to go back and I don't have the, the spreadsheets in front of me right now, but I'd have to go back and look at it and see what it is. It may change. I mean, the cost may change at that point in time. But one of the things we have, I mean.
Well, these are approximate costs anyway.
Business environments. I think what the most important thing to look at on this one right here is, is an additional school to be determined, wasn't identified in the first set for the Joint Education Funding Form. But what it does show is that we've got, we, we're still looking at a 10-year event horizon where we know we've got 300 students per, per year on average over the last 30 years coming into the school system. We need another school. And so at that point in time, once we know what grade level, that number's going to change anyway because cost between grade levels change is significantly different. Elementary schools are usually cheaper than middle schools or high schools.
You know, Steve, that brings to point that we're doing all of this increased growth, have all this increased growth and our building is elementary and middle, but yet our high schools are overflowing. And with the types of courses that we teach at the high school level, we're limiting ourselves now because we're so overcrowded. At those schools, only one, one high school is not overcrowded, now Southwest. So we may want to be thinking about some type of addition of that construction in the future.
And historically, I mean, Ozil County has been the youngest demographic in the nation pretty much and because of the base and, and whatever reason. So we've always, we were always heavier on the elementary schools and middle and high schools. But over the last several years, we're seeing, we're seeing a slow change in that where even our federal impact numbers are already decreasing. So we're starting to see more increase in the middle school and high school levels too. So now we, that's one of the things we have to address. And that's one of the reasons why we wouldn't make a, make a guess at what type of school we're going to put in in 2027.
I want to maybe piggyback on what you just stated. I know for several years, even before I got on the board, the topic of Richlands High School, that old, old section there is sort of hidden. Is that something, I say new, 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 but are there any facilities that fall in line with Richlands?
It's a possibility.
And it desperately needs it.
And remember, one of the things, the 2027 one is, is a place mark for additional construction capacity. Now, it could be a school or do we need to do an expansion on a Richlands High School or, or some other facility? So these are things that we have to take a look at in more detail once we see the numbers coming in.
Didn't our CIP back in 2007, 2008 include an extensive document that actually showed where we could build on to our existing facilities? Don't we have a document in the file somewhere on that? Seems to be.
I think we do.
I think we do as well.
We have our long-range, long-range needs assessments.
Yes. Yes, I did. Yeah. And, and there are, well, let's, let's talk about this for a second because this impact, if, if we may, Matt Chair, this, this impacts these future school needs. I mean, there's two types of, of school construction. You've got expansion of classroom space and also core capacity. So there are some locations where you, you are running out of core capacity. You, you don't have a cafeteria large enough. So kids are starting, if you expand classroom, classroom, classroom and do not also expand core or offload students, in which case, why'd you expand so many classrooms? You're going to have lunches starting at 10:00 AM and extending to 2:00 PM, which is murder on, on kids. So, so the cores, gyms, library or media centers, cafeterias, they, they need to be considered as well. Now, aside from that, one thought that comes to mind, lo these many years later, in, in light of our earlier discussion on the skill center and, and knowing what our counterparts around the state have done and knowing what in my, my past life, talking with other county managers and what they've been funding around the state is, is something that we should consider maybe. We, we're, we're always to review our CIPs on an annual basis, based on new data, based on new student enrollment. Where are we going now? Do we need to adjust for windage? Well, we just built, for the school system and, and its wisdom with help from many others and the state, build a skill center that's going to affect multiple, multiple schools. Are we able to affect some other district-wide asset that, that would help multiple schools? Some other places have done that with athletic facilities, instead of building high school and its own stadium and et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Or, or not having an area for, for swimmers absent they go find a hotel pool or go to the base. You know, are we, are we, as we move forward in the CIP, able to, to look district-wide? Is there something that we can build at one centralized location that will help, help multiple, multiple schools? Whether that's a really awesome auditorium that can be booked by multiple places, thereby lowering the individual school cost, but, but giving a better asset for all students to use? So just, just some of this. And the community. That's right. Just some ideas.
So construction for the next five years, we're looking at 88 million, 88.5 million. The additional school, that's a, that's a slide right there, that's about $30.8 million. That could change depending on where you live. So in summary, just want to mention that we continue to see strong growth in student population. While the Hurricane Florence impacted our pop, our student growth this year, we still saw an increase in student population growth this year. Over the last 30 years, we see on average 300-plus students per year. Our capital project needs for the next five years is $41.7 million. Our capital project needs for the next 10, 10 years is $109.6 million, subtracting out the roofing for Hurricane Florence. Okay? So, and all that being said is this exceeds our $2 million capital outlay that we receive every year. So based on that, if you have any other questions, I'd be willing to answer them.
I've got a quick question with regards to integration of our deferred maintenance roofing costs with hurricane costs. As we schedule our work this year, are we taking into consideration that if we've got some or multiple roofs at a facility, that we're looking at replacing a number of roofs rather than just replacing those with hurricane damage? Otherwise, if we've got three or four roofs damaged in a facility and they're already in a red line, are we aligning our capital needs program this year to let a contract do all of that work as opposed to?
That's a good question.
That's a, that's a great question. And to let you know, while we're putting together our, our roofing contracts, going out to ditch for the hurricane damage roofs, we are trying to. to, trying to assess other parts of the roofing system that we can include in it. A lot of times we have to make an alternate. So if we have funding available, we can apply for them. I mean, we can take that alternate as well, but a lot of it's going to be based on funding as well. And I know Mr. Oliver over there has been beating me to death on that. Well, you know, I got this over before we hear. I believe we need to do that too. Why can't we get this one done too? So we have that conversation quite a bit.
Glad you're asking those questions, Dusty. Glad you're asking those questions.
So, is it what I tell Dusty? I ain't got no money.
That's what Mr. Holloman says. Steve, so the, the takeaway from this capital improvement program, on the summary, you said an average of $8.3 million per year for the next five years is what we need.
For the, for the buildings.
For the buildings.
Okay, that doesn't include if we have to have a activity bus or other, other things in there? So it's a minimum $8.3 million average for five years.
Well, if this, if we get to deliver this message on Monday, we need to explain that quite well as to what it includes and what it excludes.
Mr. Myers, you mentioned activity bus, but, but if we have a 300 per student, per year student increase, the, the first new yellow bus has to be purchased by the school district with the replacement of that yellow bus at the end of its lifecycle being picked up by the state under, under current, current regulations. So, so it's not just in the classroom, it's also, it's not just white buses, it's the yellow buses as well. But, and that comes out of our capital outlay budget.
The yellow buses, we've been trying, it comes out of the capital outlay budget, and then at times if we have any additional funds available in the operation, we try to cover that with it as well. But we, yes.
But the transportation cost and fuel comes out of our local current expense fund.
And, and just, just, just give me FYI, I mean, buses right now are running about $90,000 at least.
Wow.
No matter the yellow one.
Yeah, we're going to try to move right along because I know it's time for people to go.
No charge. All right. So, Mr. Myers has just pointed out that on average we have a need of $8.8 million per year over the next five years. And as Mr. Hudson informed you, we've only been getting $3 million a year since way back prior to 2002, 2003. Obviously, there's a huge gap there that we have not been able to fill, and many needs have gone deferred because you can't, can't afford to do it. Wanted to share with you where we were heading with our, our funding formula through Joint Education Funding Policy. If you look at this handout here, we'll walk you through a way that we had planned to try to increase that funding to get us closer to what our needs were. And so it was built in there for us, one, to try to recapture the purchasing power that we had way back when. If you were getting $3 million back in 2002, you can't acquire the same basket of goods here in 2019. So first of all, that formula addressed things such as increased costs, and it specified a certain Consumer Price Index. That's what that first page is. It shows you the history of the Consumer Price Index as it increased over time. And the second sheet here basically takes that, those increases, and you can see in the far right-hand corner at the bottom, the cumulative factor over that period of time, the cost index increased by 38.7%. Okay? And if you flip to the next page, this shows the assets. This is just the, the permanent facilities, not the buses, not the mobiles, not the other things you have to take care of. Just looking at square footage that we are responsible for maintaining and protecting. 2002, 2003, there was 2.9 million square feet. And in 1920, which would be the same as this year, 3.8 million square feet that we have to take care of. So about 30% increase in the square footage that has to be protected. So we had 38.7% Consumer Price Index increase, 30% square footage increase. If you go to the last page there, this is where we'll take a look and see how that, that buying power works out. The baseline funding, $3 million way back when, and it's pretty much remained the same every year except for a few years when the county had a budget crunch during the economic downturn. We actually got cut back to 1.5 million, and then gradually they added about $400,000 a year to get us back to, to 300,000. But if you take that original $3 million, divide it by that original square foot, it sells about a dollar and two cents per square foot that we had to maintain those facilities. Factor in the 38.7% Consumer Price Index increase, and that means today it will cost a dollar and 41 cents to be able to do what you did back then per square foot. And if we multiply that by the 3.8 million square feet that we now have to maintain, means we need a revenue of $5.4 million to be able to do what we were doing on St. Paul back in 2002 with, at $3 million. But we're not getting 5.4. We're still getting $3 million. And so that's a, a $3 million is obviously well short of the 8.8 on average that he says that in, on average the next five years we need. It's even well short of the 5.4 that our funding formula should have provided this year, but that part of the formula was not, not honored. So I guess at this point, it'd be good to have some thoughts, suggestions, discussion about how, how do you go about bridging that gap from what we have historically been receiving in funding and where we need to be.
Could I ask you, first of all, how you came up with 38.7 increase? Was that a addition of the...
Of the cumulative effect? Because you go to this page, if you basically start, you had a dollar in 2002, and you upped it by the 2.1%. And in 2003, that's a, a 1.02, you know, dollars. The next year, there was a 2.7% increase, but you had to build that on top of the previous increase. So this last column is showing the cumulative effect. So at the end of that period of time, the cumulative increase would be 38.7%.
38.7% in the bottom.
That's right.
Got you.
But even that, even if we had been funded at the 5.4, you see that's still well below what we actually need had we received that level of funding.
In, in previous years, this has been part of our presentation to the county, and it's been summarily dismissed every year. What expectations do we have that, that's going to change this year? Or what are we going to present that shows, other than the documentations that we may be in this previous presentation, but how do we change mindsets that we need more than $3 million? I mean, if, if, if they're locked in, they're going to give us $3 million, and, and that's the baseline where we start at, the last several years, that's where we've ended up at. So how do we go from there? How do we get to the five or the six, or more realistically, the eight that we need?
And that's why we really are here, because I, I think that, as well as all of you, I know that, I know that, we do have, these are needs, these are not wants, these are needs. And I don't know that we will change their minds, but I think publicly we have an obligation to our, our public, to the taxpayers, to show why our schools need this. And if we do it enough, and hopefully in our interactions with people on a personal level, that we can share this information, that may change the commissioner's understanding.
My personally, my personal, and this is what I will bring to the table on Monday. Had we been funded at a level that would have at least been able to take care of our roofs, we would have been in a much better position at the end of the hurricane than we were right now. And I think that's our strongest point to go forward on this. Had we been able to have roofs in place that had not exceeded their lifestyle or their lifespan by, in some cases, I think I saw 2007, you know, we're talking 10, 12 years, we would not have had all these damages. We wouldn't have incurred all of the lost time on the days, et cetera. We could have got back into working with the students much quicker. I, I think that's our strongest point, that we need to go forward because last year may have been an anomaly, but we live on the East Coast. Hurricanes have been coming here and will continue to come here long after all of us are gone. This is something that we need to take a strong look at. We may be able to get by with not paving a parking lot because we're going to have some water running. We may have some pot hole. When you have the roofs, and, and if you look at the costs, and you go back through and you look at all of where we're spending our money, the cost of roofing is our number one expense in all of the needs that we have here. That's where our focus needs to be, get roofs on these facilities.
Followed closely by building conditioning systems, boilers and chillers that, that have a limited life. And there's also another aspect to not performing this type of capital maintenance, and that is on the operations side, the ongoing need for more hours of upkeep and maintenance.
Correct.
Which, which happens at a cost through the current expense budget and the efforts of, of Onslow County Schools Maintenance Department. So if we, if we replace things on the appropriate lifecycle, we're going to cut down on our current expense budget.
And we won't have to give so much money to do for our utilities.
Right, that's right.
And Dusty, tell me if I'm, tell, tell me if I'm misstating. Our, our three primary systems that re, that cost us the most and we could spend $3 million on almost any year would be roofing systems, would be chillers, and would be painting.
Painting is, is something that we've backed off in years because, like as Yolanda mentioned, we try to keep the water out of schools as much as possible. We do have a lot of complaints on painting, and we try to address that. And this is something that we've accomplished and made some good weight on some of that. The biggest thing is the most affected by, by far, our maintaining our HVAC systems, again, as it's expense and it has only certain life expectancy, we try to push it as much as possible. And, and painting is something that we can spend a lot of money on, again, so, but we also have to consider, with HVAC and roofs, we need to deal with our environmental controls If we slack off on our roofs, this will cost us more money, this is most of it.
Well, we see that.
It's just, it's just a year. The longer we, we don't do something, the more it's blowing to cost us. And it's not a, it's not a straight-line basis problem. It's going to expedite a little, whether it deals with more moisture in the buildings, which causes more bill do, which causes more issues as far as cleaning and painting, flooring issues, things, board swelling of, you know, carpet to be replaced, you know, it all, good maintenance saves us money along with it. Being able to prevent maintenance is something that we don't have the luxury of doing a whole lot of.
I can mention one more thing. As far as the roofs are concerned, right now, we know we have several that are end-of-life cycle, excuse me. But at the same time, so what we do is we patch them. Now, with the hurricane coming through, we had a lot of rain coming into the schools, okay? Some of these roofs that were patched, well, because you've got the hurricane winds coming in, that, that patch may blow up a little bit and winds coming into it. Well, the insurance company is saying, well, that's wind-driven rain. That's not roofing issue because it should have been replaced a long time ago. So we, we're going through these discussions as well. If the roof was replaced, I mean, at the end of the site, its lifecycle, then at that point in time, we wouldn't have that issue with the water coming into the school.
Steve, are we, are we upgrading our roofs as we replace them? Are, are we, are you okay?
Mr. Myers gets very emotional over roofing systems.
I'll direct it, Dusty. Are, are we upgrading the roofs, the roofing system when, like, are we getting better shingles? Are they more wind resistant? Are we, are we doing anything like that to upgrade them?
Depending on the structure, and it's all dependent upon the structure, how, what we can do. In certain cases, yes, we have, we are. In some of the prior yearly budgets, we just like the Southwestern Elementary and Jacksonville College Elementary, we went from a shingle roof, which is common, to Hunter's Creek and Queens Creek, to a metal, standing seam metal roof. It is more expensive. We did it in increments, but we didn't have problems there that we had at the other schools. So we do that when we can. Also, building codes have changed, things have increased, the wind load has increased here on the coast. So we're trying to update things based on improvements in building, or requirements too. So that also causes us to do things a little different, and like all things, that little bit of difference costs us money. And something that we need to consider too, something I don't want to worry about, and maybe none of y'all, but when all these roofs that are replaced that we're doing with the hurricane, they're all going to come to their life expectancy at about the same time, 70 years from now. So unless we do update some of them, unlike the metal roofs or something, that hopefully will last us 30, 40, 50 years. So somebody in the future is going to have to deal with this too. And it's been a big expense, and again, something the county or someone else is going to have to help us in the future.
Well, I hope as we move forward in construction of our new projects that are coming on board, that we're going to look at the community use part of that building as being a stronger building so that we can have accessible shelter for emergencies. And that's a cost savings to the county, really, when you think of that, so.
Madam Chair, can, may I ask, how, how would we set that in place as general board guidance in, in the construction of future facilities?
That's okay.
I'm sorry, Steve.
I think, I think that this board has the authority to put that in policy.
Well, it, it's certainly one of the mandates in, in 115C that, that we are to build school facilities. In, in my, in my mind, if we're going to build, build an elementary school, and that elementary school were, were to cost 13 million, and yet for 14 million, you get a metal roof that won't peel up after a hurricane, and a hardened multipurpose area, maybe not the entire school, but at least a hardened multipurpose area that the community knew that based on, on wind, wind speeds, it would be a safe place to evacuate to during a storm that has a, a generator preset with fuel tank able to, to serve that community need, it would behoove the community to make that investment. It, it may not serve a, a day-to-day educational purpose other than recover quickly right after a storm.
Mr. Hudson, Madam Chair, one of the things I would like to mention is for the two new elementary schools, we've already had that discussion, and we're making, we're putting in an alternate to make it, I mean, higher wind loads on the roof, metal walls, generator, and be able to handle up to 140 mile per hour winds. So it's going to be an alternate that when we get it, if, if our funding's available, we'll go ahead and zone into the ones that are, that have been allotted to us. If it's not available, then we go back to the county at that point in time and say, we would like to go ahead and make this more of a buffer-proof type environment for hurricanes and storms. Can you provide the additional funds for it?
But, Mr. Myers, I agree with all that, up to the point where you said that we would take it as an add alternate and go back to the county. I mean, I, I think that getting consensus with the county, that now our standard in eastern North Carolina, Onslow County, should be that we would build schools that are better able to withstand hurricanes. If we have that agreement upfront, I, I don't believe in surprises, and I don't want to surprise them any, either, anymore than I would appreciate a surprise from them to this board. But I think that they would, they would consider that common sense. Mr. Williams?
Thank you.
I would too.
I've been waiting 10 minutes to incorporate that back into the conversation.
Well, Jeff said that he's through. Anybody else? Anybody else have any comments that they'd like to make? This has been a really workshop, it's been a workshop to have that discussion. Dr. Singletary?
Just a footnote to whatever you thought you were going to get out of this. The upcoming meeting, based on our best cleaning of interaction with the county folks, is that it is not going to be setting a budget meeting. I think, from what we have gleaned, that there is some expectation of, how do we start anew, with the funding formula having been dissolved? They are going to be looking at discussion of, how do we move forward with some type of new funding formula, be it 1031, or some variation of, that we two boards could agree Hearing what you said today, we've heard you say that in prior gatherings, and we have offered that up as a complimentary concern. Not only do we have concern about a funding formula, but we are gravely concerned about the need for capital improvement, and ongoing abilities to provide in that category, which has historically been stagnant. So, we've offered that up, at least from an administrator to an administrator, from the invitation that we got to invite you to come to the meeting. I don't think there's a set agenda, I don't think there's anything that you need to go in thinking that you've got to defend or advocate, other than, can we find common ground, and can we find a way to move forward as two boards to meet a great need for this community? So, I would just compliment the chairman in saying, let's go be good advocates, and let's advocate in the right manner, and see if we can't find a way to move forward. As we don't, we're not going back to September, that's over with, we're looking forward in terms of that. And I think Steve and staff, and Jeff and staff have done a good job of trying to give you some foundational information, and based on what I've heard today, you're ingesting that very well, and I think you all have an opportunity to go now and partner with this other board in a way to move forward.
Good, thank you. My takeaways from this, and I know that, if you have any different, I would like to hear them, because we all miss things, is that on the skill center update, that the staff is going to go forward and research a full completion of the upstairs area, based on what trades would go in there through Beth's Department and Career and Technical Ed, they'll look at the cost, and they'll look at the timeline to accomplish that. And it, the timeline, Steve, I think, would have to be within the time that we're going to open it for regular, even though we may not have those trade areas in there for that year. On the local current expense fund, things that we want to take out with us to go to the meeting is, how we, that we do base our budget on needs, what does it cost, or what is the process for increased enrollment, how much does that really cost, what encompasses, is encompassed in that cost? And then, finally, what are we doing to hold costs down? How do we justify some of the items that may have higher cost, but we've reduced it, mainly because maybe salaries of those people that are doing that particular job may be lower, et cetera? And then, on the capital fund, we said we had over 8.3 million for the next five years in needs, and if we could get that much money, it would be very helpful. Probably need to compare the hurricane chart that you've done with replacing roofs, and how that also has overlapped with some of those deferred projects. And as we move forward with repairs and replacing roofs, we want to know if we are consistent with some higher standards, or are we considering those, and you reiterated that at the end. And then, finally, as we move to our meeting, that we want to look at common ground with our commissioners, in looking at either developing, using the state formula, developing another formula, or a combination of ideas that some of the commissioners may have, that would be a different, just a different formula, or a different avenue for us to receive funding. Anything else?
I think you have encapsulated, Madam Chair.
Well, I tell you, I appreciate y'all. I, we need meetings, this was long, on your fanny, if nothing else, and those of you who have, usually have a lunch break at this time, I know you'd be delighted to leave today. Thank you for being a good sport and sharing with everybody. Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Have a good evening, good day.